Good afternoon. We're going to call to order the Tuesday, January 9th, 2024, 3:00 PM School Board Workshop. If we could please rise for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance and the National Anthem. All right, Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming, whose bright stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight, o'er the grand hearts we watched were so gallantly streaming. And the rocket's red glare, as the stars in the sky, flew through the night, as our flag was still there. Oh, say, doth that star-spangled banner yet wave, o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Thank you, we be seated. Okay, we're going to move on to roll call.
Jerome Cerros.
Colin Conklin present.
Sally.
Phil Fury present.
LaShaka Moore.
All right, so thank you. We are going to move on here to additions and changes to the agenda. Are there any?
Yeah.
Superintendent Moore, okay. So then we will move on now to public comment. Do we have any members of the public?
Yes, Ms. Daisy Henry has signed up.
Okay. Ms. Daisy, if you'd like to please come to the table.
I believe she's speaking on the Carver Community Center, but I don't want to make an assumption.
Good evening, Chairman. I had to be the one first to complain, but you know, as I come against about the ILA. And last time at your last meeting, it was a discrepancy against y'all signing in the county, signing. Y'all had, y'all had a different, and the county had a different. So, question is, are y'all on the same page today to go forward in this? And I, as I stated before, y'all need to realize that, and I told you again, the PAIR program, I guess, over the world is good, but it's not good for the Carver Gym, and I don't care what nobody say. A lot of times, people do good until they get in, and when they get in, it's a different stroke, or they change colors. And one thing that I had discussed, we talking with Dave and Ms. Moore, is about art attitude. He come in like a gorilla, throwing his weight around, and say you can't retrain people for what they already know. Your attitude, a kind word turn away wrath. And see, he didn't come in with that attitude. And he haven't, to me, he haven't won, win the trust of the peoples. And as I told you all before, he lied about a different, a lot of things, to even get monies, that he's supposed to build his own place, what he gonna do with that 202 East Drane Street. Nobody even looked at that. But see, it's a lot of things that y'all are doing, you're not looking at the whole picture. Our true life is at stake. And if we lose that to PAIR or whatever, they saying they gonna do stuff, but PAIR is a nonprofit organization with a 501(c)(3), just like my church, and I'm independent. And see, so it makes a difference with the 501(c)(3). And the question was asked too, even by you, Brother Chair, why have any other cities had a PAIR in their community center when the board's up here? Nobody answered that question. Then the question was asked too, would, could y'all go to the state attorney to, for, ask the question about ILAs? The county said no, then y'all saying no. And I don't hear anything from the city. So the city must be just got their head stuck in the sand. So justice is blind on, on sides. There need to be, eyes need to be open in a lot of areas. Question need to be raised, the community is really, is upset in, to where the things are being pushed and shoved around. And like I said before, it's over 15 to 20 ILAs out there, and nobody's on the same page. So what you need to do is just look hard at what y'all trying to do here. And I haven't looked at the latest one, I was just reading back there. But it might be, and just like Ms. Gavin had brought up some points, you need to consider the whole thing, and you're talking about monies. Why is the South Side the only one center in, in, in need for money? Y'all got things all over the county. So, but it's targeting the, our area, and I'm really concerned about what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thomas Hudson on Carver Gym.
I really have two topics, I don't know which one should go first.
It's your choice.
Carver Gym, do you allow speaking after it's presented?
Do you have the three minutes to, to?
At the Carver Gym?
Just now.
Number 10 when it comes?
Right now.
Just now? Okay, I'll go for the Carver Gym. One, the question was asked, who started the ILA? Who felt there was a need to redo the ILA and take the management, at least part of the management, away from the Carver Gym Association and stakeholders that are there? We never did get an answer to that one. The school board had their interpretation of the contract for the new ILA on December 19th. That's the one that your attorney redacted several things that were in there. It was in conflict with the one that the school, the county passed the day before. Okay? Today, you come out on the 9th, and the one that you had on the 19th has several omissions on it. I don't have time to go through all three of them, but just tell you on H, on page three, you have no allowance for the payment from the school board to the Carver Gym. That was left out of your package on the 19th. H is in there where you said you will pay Carver Gym $10,000 on the first. Right below that, on the responsibilities for the sheriff and the PAIR, you left out mentoring staffing. That was in there. You left the bottoms in, but as you go through your pages, on page four, where you identify the sheriff shall, the sheriff shall, PAIR programs will be available to all youth in Flagler County regardless of the race, religion, and financial disability. On your 19th one that was deducted by your attorney, you had race, color, religion, sex, gender, disability, and financial situations. Why you left sex, gender, and disabilities off on a gymnasium that's supposed to be fixed for all of the students and PAIR members that would come there? That's another discrepancy that you have from your 19th agreement. The other thing that you have on the one that is presented for you today, on the 19th, you had the sheriff shall provide funding for the Carver Gym and about $10,000 due October 1st. On the one that you have today, there is no money amount identified by contract where the sheriff has to supply the $10,000. The only one in this contract that you have that identified is the city of Vanel, and I guess it would be that the only one that you can trust is Vanel. To finish it up, because I don't have time to go through all of them, on page five, you left completely out the shared responsibilities. Your shared responsibilities on your paper on the 19th, you had A and B in there, where you, the school board, sheriff, and the police athletic lead had sheriff, had shared responsibilities. On the one that you're asked to vote on today?
Okay, so I'm going to wrap that up now. We're giving you a little time.
Yeah, I am going to. Is, you know, it's left out of there. So I would recommend that you table this until you can take these three documents and create one out of them. Now, you've got four governments, and had this since December 4th, and it's still not right. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We will be having, this is on the agenda, so we will have presentations from district staff today that may answer some of the questions you brought forward. So, thank you. Next.
That's, oh, sorry, Mr. Josie.
Just one minute. Eric Josie for the community, Mr. Fury.
Sure, please come.
I'm going to defer my opportunity for public comment, and I hope after the presentation by the school district, I get opportunity to make my presentation with the consent of the board.
Okay.
Thank you. I didn't sign either.
Would you like to come on?
You'll sign.
Come on, come on up.
Good to see you, sir.
Let us know your, your name.
My name is David Williams. I'm a concerned citizen, and the question I have on this is, what other community center has the same opportunity that they have for the Carver Gym? Why is it so concerning about PAIR being at Carver Gym and nowhere else? That's the question that I want to ask. And the next thing is that, why, why do you have to have police there, a line where there's black kids predominantly? That scares them away. Next thing, you know you won't have anybody out there but the kids from the PAIR. So, to me, it's, it's just an unfair situation, and it doesn't take a rocket scientist to see things. I mean, I can explain it the way that I really want to, but you can see the picture. So, my thing is that why is it that, so so concerned about the Carver Gym? Take the PAIR to another place, they got other community centers. You put them in there first and then work your way down there. So that's, that's my concern.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay.
Is there any more public comment that has not signed up that would like to speak at this time? Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board here, and we will be moving on to number seven, finance consent. We have a request board approval of Imagine Charter School Financials.
Good afternoon, Chairman Fury.
Good afternoon, welcome.
Board members and Superintendent Moore, we are here to answer any questions on finance consent, starting with 7.01.
Are there any questions or comments? Okay, so we'll move on to 7.02, request board approval for purchase orders over 10,000.
Can I have a question?
Go ahead, Miss, I'm sorry.
Page, it's page one and two, Alonso Sign Language, how's that? Do we have contract for them, or is that through Florida Virtual? What is that?
That is an actual contract with them.
For, for our schools?
Yes, for our students.
Okay, so our students are, are taking instruction directly from their instructors?
Um, Tim Halliday.
That's what I need verification.
Sure, sure. This service, how is everybody?
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
This service is specifically for students who do have disabilities. So it's an interpreting service for them. This is not instructional.
Okay, because I know we have instructional, I'm just trying to figure out how that fits into the grant screening thing, so this is not it.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
No, that's all I have tonight. The other thing too, in page 22, quantum health, 23,000.
Page, um.
Page 22.
That's the next item.
Oh, that's vendors, yeah, next on.
Okay, so we, yes, we're going to move on to 7.03, request board approval for vendor payments.
Yeah, that, that's quantum health. They, they, we're paying 23,000, actually, it's a good thing, because I'm getting more positive feedback. So I just want to say that what I'm hearing from a lot of our staff that are utilizing quantum health, the changes that they have made seem to be effective. So let's hope that continues. So just a positive on that.
Okay, that's encouraging. All right, any other questions on vendor payments? Seeing none, we'll move on to 7.04, request board approval for deletion of inventory, tangible personal property, and vehicles. Seeing no questions, we'll move on to 7.05, request board approval of finance budget amendments. Any questions? Any comments? Seeing none, we'll move on to 7.06, request board approval of professional development travel. Okay. Any, anybody? No? Okay, so we'll move on. 7.07, request board approval of district financial statements. Yes?
Just a couple of questions. Patty, can you tell us a little bit about the, for budget revisions, the increase for Imagine's portion of the half-cent sales tax, $650,000?
Yes, when the actual budget for the half-cent sales tax was done, it was not calculated based on their enrollment. This is their actual amount for sales tax that we did budget for, but it wasn't added into Skyward. So that is their annual amount that was always, that was already factored into Mr. Deising's budget. And in order for us to pay it out, we had to get the budget in there.
Okay. Any other questions regarding district financial statements? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to 7.08, request board acknowledges receipt of attached schedule of impact fees collected.
Just a question, Patty, when will we expect the second quarter? It should be coming in soon, should it not?
No, these run at least two to three months in arrears.
Yeah, okay. It'll be a while. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And just for the benefit of the public, sometimes we're able to move through these consent items, because these are posted to our board docs, and we're able to review these ahead of time, and we only ask questions if there's things that are not, that seem to be new or something we're not aware of. So, thank you both for.
Thank you.
Presentation today.
Thank you.
And we are going to move on now to nine, academic services consent, and we have science instruction material adoption, Ms. Heidi Oliver.
As she's coming, this information is for information only for the board and information for the public. It will, you will not see it on your business meeting for any action.
Good afternoon and Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
So I am, as Superintendent Moore said, I'm here not for consent, but more for informational regarding our science instructional materials adoption process. I'm announcing that we are beginning our public review period for this year's science instructional materials adoption that begins on January 19th, and it goes through February 17th. And then we will have opportunities for public comment at the February 20th meeting. I just wanted to give you some statistics and some history about how we've, you know, what we've been doing so far with our instruction materials. Nineteen teachers, coaches, and administrators attended the NIFEC Instructional Materials Fair in Gainesville, and that was October 16th and 17th. And then we had the publishers come to Flagler here, in, in these rooms here on the third floor, on the 7th and 8th, and the publishers presented in 45-minute increments to our teachers, our committee members, really, and our parents. And we had 39 teachers attend, seven administrators, and 10 parents. So it was two days, and it was, it was great. Instruction materials have been delivered to each and every school, and they're being displayed, so teachers and administrators can review them up until the end of the public review period on the 17th. Lots of the schools are building it into PLCs or Common Planning, giving them really some good, authentic time to review those materials. I built out a Schoology course where I go through the rubric. We built a rubric that we modified from the DOE's Core Questions Rubric, and the Schoology course that, currently, there's 86 teachers that are registered in it, and I made little videos that walk them through the rubrics. So when they look at the materials, they know what they're looking at and how the state goes about ranking them, so we can do the same. So, all the rubrics will be accepted digitally, so it'll be an easy way to keep track of all of the data. At the completion of the public review period, and after public comment, we will then convene the Instruction Materials Committee, which will consist of those 39 teachers, seven administrators, and hopefully a little, a few more than the 10 original committee members that attended in December. And what we'll do at that time is we will rank them based on the rubrics, and then we will sit and wait for the state to then give us their, their list in hopefully early spring, but probably more like late spring. But as far as the public review period, as of the 29th, there will be a tab on the Flagler Schools website where parents and community members can go in, and they will have access to all the digital materials with directions, and publishers created really nice little videos to kind of walk them through what they're looking at, as well as PDFs of the student resources. And all of these resources are currently being housed in the Teaching and Learning Department on the third floor of this building, Government Services Building. And starting on the 29th, anyone that wants to come in and review those materials can do so from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM, Monday through Friday, except holidays, and no appointment is necessary. They can just come on in and review those. So, any questions?
Any questions? Yes, Dr. Conklin.
Okay, so a lot of work goes into this process. How are we, are we advertising for parents to be aware? I know typically. I know typically schools will do through their PTOs or their spec meetings. How are we informing families and community members that they can participate in this process?
Well, we are definitely, everything's on our website right now as far as our, um, our calendar of events. But we are really leaning on schools to reach out and, and make that information known. I'm getting text messages and emails from principals and assistant principals, you know, asking when, when is this gonna go public so everyone can...
Right.
Review it. And can they come in? I, I actually had two calls today. When can they come in and just review it? And they were really, um, happy to hear that they didn't have to make an appointment. They could just come on in, so.
Do you think we could possibly think about maybe even doing either a letter to the editor or an article in...
Sure.
Some of the, or press release or something? Just because a lot of people, if it's just on the website, they won't know, or if it's just through Saks or PTOs.
So, like an alert, maybe?
They won't know.
Okay, Sky Alert, okay. We can absolutely do that.
But like so that it's out in the public, right?
Exactly.
So, it's in the newspaper or something that...
Perfect.
Not just school people would know about.
Okay. So, besides the Sky?
Yeah, so we can work, we can work with, um, Don Foley...
Okay, perfect.
Um, in order to get that information out.
Because that's one thing we always hear. Yeah, the schools know about what we didn't know about.
Right, right, right.
As community members.
Yeah, I'm talking about community members.
Sure, absolutely.
An article or just, uh, you know, we're in the middle of this curriculum review process. Here's open door invite, blah, 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 blah.
Perfect.
Just to add to that real quick, I mean, it would just be good to have, not necessarily a policy, but what is a best practice or a, what we do with any time there's curriculum review of it goes here, here, you know, Facebook page, you know?
Right.
Whatever.
Gotcha.
So, I think that, I think before...
And we do, um, send it out to our families, post it on our website, social media, those things. But you're, you're specifically talking about reaching more so to our community to come in and review the materials as well. And so, we can definitely add, um, that to our process guide for instruction materials.
Perfect. That's a great recommendation.
And I don't think people really realize all that goes into the process.
Right, absolutely. And really, the rubric in itself, um, we took, like I said, we took the Core Questions Rubric from the state, which is quite lengthy. And we, um, used that for our teachers and our administrators, and then we pared it down a bit for the, for the community. Um, but I also added a few things in that I felt were important, not necessarily for the community, but definitely for the teachers and administrators because we have so many new teachers. And so, when they, when teachers are sitting down to look at these materials, they should look at what kind of supports are in those resources for those brand-new teaching teachers. Even the veterans could use a few, you know, I mean, they might, you know, see something in, in, in the teacher resources. Or how are we scaffolding and how are we providing additional support for our students? These are things that I think the DOE's rubric is great, but it's super generic. You know, because it has to apply to every single content area, whereas I think that we have done a really good job. And I, I, I worked closely with Amy Fair, and we looked at the rubric and, and decided, and also based on some, some of the neighboring counties, what did they include in their rubric that maybe we can add? Because I think it's just, it might make it a little bit longer, and I had to, you know, apologize to teachers for it. However, I, I think it's just super important. This is a five-year adoption, and this is not something we're gonna take lightly because science is important. I don't know if you heard, but it is.
Yeah, man. So, one, one last question. Speaking of your rubric, right? You know what I'm probably gonna ask about. So, I'm, I'm wondering, were one of the things added for teachers to look at were labs, experiments?
Yes, absolutely.
Use of use of...
Yes, for sure, absolutely. Because I know that, um, our current resource for elementary had a lot of things that were activities over labs. And we had to really go in and ma, make modifications to make those true, true lab, you know, experiences. So, we, you know, we put in a lot of work and, you know, we invested a lot of time, which was very worthwhile. However, why don't we look for a resource? And that should be something that we need to really put our finger on and say, is this what we want? So, I mean, the, everyone that's come to, to sit and walk through things and everyone at the schools, they're just amazing. So, I mean, I couldn't be happier with it.
And hi, I lied. One more question. When we do do the purchase, when we're looking at this, I know in the past, whether it's reading or math or science, sometimes we'll, we'll get a portion of the resources, but we won't get all of the resources. And sometimes it's viewed that the, the additional resources are the niceties.
Right.
When really, truly, those additional resources can make or break what's going on in the classroom. So, when we're doing an adoption, like, are we looking at investing in all of that?
We are looking at all of the things, but I will say, just with my ten years of experience, plus, you know, in the classroom experience, oftentimes those additional resources, like the kits, are cotton balls and yarn.
Yes.
And, you know, like, I would rather...
You can buy cheaper on your own.
Yeah, but, you know, but the, but the activities themselves need to be, they need to be rigorous and they need to be meaty. But I agree, if there's equipment and that sort of thing, I'm, I'm working with federal programs now. I've got some, some funds that, that I really wanna show some love to the elementary schools, and it will be for equipment and things like that that, that could very well support this adoption. That's the plan.
Okay, great.
But any of the, the portions that, um, are connected to our students accessing the curriculum and the standards? We, we, those things, we, we would definitely look at, um, purchasing through the adoption. However, sometimes we do, um, not go for some of the additional materials that we can purchase in bulk and in a different manner.
Yeah, for sure.
If it's access or if it's a scaffold resource.
Exactly.
We do, um, but we do work, also work with our schools to make a determination about, um, you know, the number, the number of physical, um, materials versus some of the digital materials and all of those different things.
Specifically with science, it just gets so critical that they have the materials to actually conduct the experiments that are recommended. So, whether it's buying the kits or building our own kits.
Right, absolutely.
As long as they have that material and, and the equipment and the, you know...
Definitely.
Whatever they need to actually have that hands-on experience.
And we have consistently ensure that there were dollars in our budget in order to, um, to make sure that our schools have access.
And that teachers aren't having to go out and buy cotton balls.
Yes.
No.
And I know you're wrapping up, but I wanna give you an opportunity to make a plug for something extremely exciting that just happened...
Yes.
Um, for one of our teachers and our school, one of our schools.
So, Carly Stessa, uh, she's a first grade teacher at Old Kings Elementary School, and she is the feature in the STEM magazine for this month. And I did make a copy for everyone. It's on our website. Um, she basically does a turtle conservation project where she does an after-school program. And she is the feature. And she mentions Flagler Schools, and she mentions how she connects all of this to her students.
Wow, this is a big deal.
It is a big deal. So, um, it's on our social media, it's on our website, and, um, she is an amazing inspirational educator. And, uh, nineteen years of classroom experience, she has such a passion. If you ever have a chance, go to Old Kings and introduce yourselves because she is amazing.
This is a big deal. That's a big-time magazine for education.
And one of the things that we're really focused on right now is beyond just the, the normal things that we provide, but really highlighting the different experiences that we give to our students, um, that most people may not think that they ever have. And so...
Exactly.
Um, this is one of those things. And as much as possible, we're gonna bring those things and share them with you.
Super. And, you know, I'd spend all day here, but, you know, there's other stuff people want.
Everything we're looking at has been, been adopted by FDOE.
Well, it is on, it is on the list.
But it hasn't been cleared yet.
Nothing has been cleared yet. So, that's why we rank. We're doing the ranking system. And all of the publishers have the rubric, and they have all of the things in advance. So, what they bring to the table should be, but we, but that's...
Which is why she's saying that we will wait.
We will wait.
When do you expect that?
So, we're gonna wait. Before we bring anything to this board...
We run into trouble with that in the past, and I want to make sure we're clear.
Before we bring anything to the board, we will go through this, we will review. We have to be prepared and ready. When the state releases, um, the approve, the final approval list, that's when we will come back before the board, um, for decisions.
Because we've been told a couple of times, you know, make sure we don't have that.
I just wanna be ahead of it, and I want the process because, you know, we want to make sure that, we're in a gap year. So, we wanna make sure that we have time and we can adopt resources. Because really, what we're using currently, which is HMH, they didn't even put in for adoption. So, that isn't an option. So, it's not an option moving forward, so.
Thank you.
But if you have any other questions, you all can just let me know. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, so nine point zero two, overnight travel consent. That's Mr. Reeves. Has he returned?
Nope, Mr. Marcus Sanfilippo.
Okay.
Mr. Reeves is en route to, um, back to Flagler County. He, um, they are traveling behind the storm, apparently.
Yes.
Um, but our, I won't talk about how great of a job our students did.
She's amazing, I heard. Amazing. Oh, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Everybody doing?
Very good. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. So, we have a group of students traveling to the University of Tennessee for the percussion program at MHS. So, basically, they're just going through, it's, they're driving up on a Friday, performing on Saturday, presenting. They'll be listening, be judged, critiqued on their performance, and then coming back on Sunday.
It's a great, great trip.
Yes, pretty cool.
Great experience.
It's all world experience, yeah.
Go Bulls, yeah.
Any, uh, questions?
Nope.
All right, we are, uh, good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, um, so, we will move on to operational services consent. And, uh, we're at ten point zero one, George W. Carver Community Center Interlocal and Facility Use Agreement. Um, and, uh, Mr. Walker, if you could please join us, and Mr. Freeman. All right. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, board, Superintendent Moore.
You both are just losing, uh, taking it, making some changes.
I took what he lost, don't worry.
It's like two new men.
It's a new, New Year.
It's a New Year. Happy, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year, gentlemen.
Board, um, I just wanted to, um, give you a little update on where we were the last time we met on the nineteenth of December. We brought a, uh, ILA to you that had some comments from our attorney that, uh, we were looking at. We, uh, updated board docs with the county's, um, ILA, which is dated November thirteenth. That was the one that went to the county and was approved. Um, so, we had the attorney look at it. We brought those forward to you on the nineteenth. Um, after that meeting, Joshua and I met with, um, the county, uh, Jorge, and our Flagler County Sheriff Office, Chief Williams. Um, we made some corrections that, uh, that was discussed at the table here with the, with the school board. Um, I sent a copy of those corrections to the county and to, um, the Flagler County Sheriff. We received those back. We had one minor change to it, which, um, we have made the change in this document. This document is dated the eighth of January. That is, has all the changes incorporated from the nineteenth of December meeting from our school board attorney. You all received an email from Joshua. I did receive some comments back from the school board. This document has those comments incorporated in it. And then, uh, the county had a small change about, uh, funding, uh, for, or setting rates...
For, for use of facilities.
For use of facilities that we incorporated in this document.
So, on board docs, like Mr. Freeman mentioned, you have the county copy that was approved at their December eighteenth meeting. And then the other one dated January eighth is, is our copy with red lines. That's what's presented here before you at the, uh, on the screen. I do wanna make note that this is the one where we went ahead and, with Attorney Gavin's guidance, we added in certain things like adding color, sex, gender, and disability to the whereas clause. Uh, there, I believe there's some misconceptions, uh, just based off of what we were hearing. The red line copy is what Flagler Schools has made edits to and has brought forward after meeting with our, uh, partners with the sheriff's office in the county. So, before you is that agreement.
So, Joshua, the, um, the January eighth document.
Mm-hmm.
That is the document that basically contains the recommendations from Christie Gavin.
Yes.
And are you saying that that was shared with the county, and the county is in agreement with that red line document?
Yes.
The county and the sheriff were in agreement.
Okay, so...
With an addition.
Yes.
With that one addition.
Second addition, yes.
Is, so, is that in this?
It is.
Correct. So, if you'll go to page six under, was it section six B? Or is it, yeah, six B, that was an addition, uh, a suggestion by the county to incorporate the county setting fees for essentially renting out that facility. Um, so, that is a new item that was included in. Everything else that we made suggestions on, the county staff and the sheriff's office staff were, uh, amenable to, and we included it in this document.
Who does that currently?
We do.
We do. We set the, uh, fee with, uh, feedback from the Carver Governance Board, soon-to-be advisory committee.
And as of right now, we're turning that over to the county? Is that what the change is?
That is what the county is proposing.
Okay, and, and I have, I, I always spoke to Josh yesterday late afternoon about some concerns with that. Because in this agreement on one A, it says that we want to go to one A.
What page is that?
I believe it's two. Page two of point.
Eleven eight, eight, I mean, the January eighth document. That is the document everyone should be looking at.
Right, go to one A. One A, it states the school board will be solely responsible for the daily operations of the areas of Carver Center. But then, this new addition states that the county's gonna be responsible for the, um, the rentals and the usage. Establishing that, that jumps back now to five B. The establishment of fees for events for use of Carver Center will require approval from the Board of County Commissioners. The method of collection, the method of accounting, and subsequent expenditures of fees for use of Carver Center or participation activities that occur. The facilities shall be developed by the Board of County Commissioners or County.
So, one A is in conflict with that?
Direct, number one. Two, I was concerned because that's why it also tells us we use our Facilitron. Our Facilitron is based on fees based, that were set and approved by the school board. Now, that would be negated because they wanna set their fees, and they wanna set their fees, and I understand what they're trying to do. They want to set their fees to be comparable to what the county facilities are that they use right now. That's what they're trying to do. That's not anything like what they rent otherwise. That's why the school board ended up stepping in at that time. What they rent now out there is like camping locations and large facilities for events or parks, okay? This is so very different. I'm not understanding why they want to do that when we already have a system in place that was working well, which has the site manager who's there, who understands the facility and already guidelines to follow. So, I, I, I'm a little baffled by this last-minute addition.
Correct. So, what is, what was the logic being? What was the reason for that?
Uh, the logic behind it, uh, that county staff explained to us was because it is a county-owned facility. That was their, their intent behind it.
And the county does rent out rooms and other items, not just camping facilities. I mean, they have...
No, no, they have, they have large facilities, and they have the park facilities and things there that they run out. The point is that they have a different, completely different structure than we would because we're renting a lot for kids.
Right.
You know, and, and that, that is part of that. I mean, this, this final agreement that we received, I think, is so much better. As I said from the past, PAL needed to be removed. It is. That was the number-one goal. Because, not that they need to be removed from, they've been using, utilizing that facility for years. That's not new. PAL has always been utilizing that facility. With the sheriff coming in, I think they can get a little more use of that facility. It depends what program they have, and they can work together to schedule it and use it properly, all right? But I don't see how we can be solely responsible and yet giving out the rental. And then what kind of structure is the county gonna develop to receive applications, to go through applications, to get timeframe and approvals? Um, I mean, I think that's all part of what's written in there.
And what's it cost?
I, I don't think that the process would change. We would, we would still use Facilitron to make reservations at the facility. The county is basically, wants to say that they would like to set those rates, okay?
But we don't know what those rates are.
We don't know what those rates. I think that what, and we haven't added anything...
Should we not know them?
Yeah, so before we prove anything?
Well, I mean, that's...
It would, it would probably be set new because to my knowledge, the county doesn't operate a gymnasium at this moment. So, it might be something where there's not a comparable facility as far as that comes. That's a conversation we can have to see what that would look like. I know there's potential rewarding we could do so that our, uh, when it talks about the method of accounting and the collection of it, would probably need to be in the school board's hand, and that would be Facilitron. So, I think a further conversation will need to be had in regards to that, given the feedback we've received today.
Yeah, we think that the, with, the, the method with input from the school board and the Carver Center, um, of collection and method of accounting should be with us, not with the county.
Right.
Um, and so, that would be stricken from that sentence. But we didn't wanna change that because we haven't talked to the county about that.
No, so, I, I mean, I, I think other than that, I mean, we, we are now in a clear ILA agreement that I believe is legal. that I believe is legal because it does not specify PAL in any way, shape, or form. So, that is a plus. And I think this is basically right. We just need to work out how that next piece of it works. The part that they.
While the facility, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, I just, the, right now, when we collect the fees currently, we set those rates. And then, are those, are those money's going on to the county now?
No. Those are being held in an internal account for our staff to use to put back into the center.
Okay, so then, in this new proposal, they would still be using Facilitron, but the county would be setting the rates that we plug in there? And then, where, where would that money be going now? Still into the fund now, or would it be going to the county now?
The original intent of the request from the county was they just wanted to set the rates for it. They did not communicate wanting to receive the funds from us. But that is something we could look to further clarify with them.
Yeah, I think it needs to be specified. I, I agree. I think that the intent was they were going to keep it with the school systems. Because that's the only money that Carver has to operate off of. We don't budget Carver anything, and all the county budget Carver's for is their maintenance and upkeep.
And all of those, all of those, you go back into programming.
And all the staff, and I mean, Carver, I mean, the county pays all the.
But I would want to know what those, those fees would be. Because if they're dramatically different from what they are currently, that, I would have a major issue with that.
Well, and I'm just trying to understand why.
The change.
The change, because if the money's still staying with, with us, you know, at the same.
If it's not broke, why, why try to fix it?
I would understand if the money was going to them and they were, they were, they would want to set their own rates. But if it's still staying within, I think that should stay within our purview because we're, we're ultimately collecting it, and we should be able to say, hey, that's more or not enough at any given time.
And I agree. I think the only balance there is the fact that they are paying $70,000 or 170, whatever it is they pay. Because they pay all state.
Right, but they're not even.
They work for us, but they pay all state.
Right, but they're not, it's not like.
So, they're trying to, that's what I'm thinking.
So, but are they looking to offset?
That's what I, what's.
So, at, at the end of the day.
It's still.
It's still just, it's, it's money that goes into, you know, our account.
That goes to our.
So, I mean, if, if we're not offsetting anything that the county is giving, then I don't really see why we would give up that, make that change.
I agree.
So, you know, I think that's an area where we need to get some clarification and more enlightenment on that.
Because that's, I thought maybe that was the, the root of why they wanted to do that. They were looking to offset their cost or investment.
They have not indicated that to us.
And in this agreement, I didn't see it. Does it say that those fees collected go back into the Carver program, for programming purposes?
So, it's revenue generated at or by the Carver Center and related facilities shall be used to defray costs of the school board and county in implementing this agreement, and otherwise upgrade the facility.
Okay, so that to me sounds like that would offset their costs.
No.
Yes.
No, I'll explain why.
But, but listen.
They don't pay for, they don't pay to offset anything over there, except they pay for staffing.
Right.
That's all, and they're not going to take money.
No, Cheryl, listen to the language of that again.
Did you read it again?
Read it again.
Yeah. This is C under four or six. Revenue generated at or by the Carver Center and related facilities shall be used to defray costs of the school board and county in implementing this agreement, and otherwise to upgrade the facility and/or furnishing slash equipment.
Okay, so it said and, and/or accounting, so it would.
Defer, defer costs.
Defray costs.
Yeah.
So.
And/or upgrade the facility and/or furnishing equipment.
And that's always been that way.
And we have always.
It has always been that way.
Used that money to either buy basketballs or.
Yeah, it goes back. They don't.
Whatever we needed for.
Nobody budgets money for the Carver Center, okay? Except the county, we don't. The county budgets for the staffing and any maintenance. That's what they do. That has been the agreement. It still is.
How often?
And that's a good agreement.
What section is that, C?
How often do we revisit these, these?
Section six.
This fee schedule?
When I initially took over this role back in, I believe it was 2021, we had adjusted the rate, or the fee schedule to be $15 an hour. That was something we presented to the Carver Governance Board, and they voted on, and we implemented. At the previous, before that, there was like, like surge pricing depending on the day. But with the community, we felt it was best just to have a flat rate of 15 an hour and made it easy for anyone in the community looking to rent the facility. So, it's probably been about two to three years, maybe, since the last update.
My only concern with it is that it, as it, as just leaving it open there, is if, if somebody comes into office and wants to do a very, you know, large-scale improvement potentially and raise the fees accordingly, that could be a little bit higher than the community may be able to absorb. I'm not saying that that could happen, but anything can happen. And so, there should be some, some balance there where, you know, we have input on that in some way, shape, or form, whether it's a mutual agreement or it stays the same with us, you know, setting that fee.
So, in B, 6B.
Yeah.
Is this language recommended by the county?
Yes.
This was recommended. This was a last-minute change that we received from the county.
This is, the B is the last-minute change.
Correct.
And here's, here's my worry about this piece is previously, right? Whether the decision to charge fees or not for events or use of the Carver Gym, the method of collection, method of county, all of that was up to, basically, Carver.
Correct.
Yeah, the school, the school system.
No, but, but now, any kind of event, they're going to have to go with prior approval before the Board of County Commissioners.
Yeah, and that's where I have a problem.
So, with the, with the feedback we've gotten, I believe there needs to be a bit of an update to it where it states, you know, the establishment of fees for events occurring at Carver Center will require approval of the Board of County Commission. That would take away the approval of all usage, just the setting of fees with the potential of getting input from the school board and Carver Advisory Committee on that metric.
Let's just, just for.
It can't, it doesn't work.
Oh, that.
It doesn't work.
If a refast is next week.
Right, you can't, you don't go before the board.
You can't go through the board, right?
Oh, I believe it needs to be.
He's suggesting that if any, if the Board of County Commissioners language is in here, that they would set a fee schedule. They will provide us with a fee schedule, not that every, and that we will utilize. It wouldn't be that everything would go through it. But what we're hearing from the, from this board, one, is if that was the route we were going, what would, what is the fee schedule? How much would it cost? But preferably, this board believes that the, the setting of the fees for rental should remain with the school board.
I don't even have a big problem with the set of pieces, but it does say here, will require approval of the Board of County Commissioners.
That's the establishment of, so I think what.
Yeah, we'll make, we can make an edit for that.
I'm, I'm reading it wrong. I think you're reading it like I read it. This is the establishment, this is, it's the establishment of the fee schedule, not the establishment.
Or use.
So, I think it's the or use that's.
The or use is the problem.
And, and we would recommend taking that out and saying, and putting occurring at the Carver Center. So, the establishment of fees or for events occurring at the Carver Center will require approval.
Yeah, because the idea of getting a prior approval by the Board of County Commissioners.
We're on the same page. I got it. Yes. That's where the problem is.
And that was a last-minute add anyway?
Yes.
See, the original document that was already approved by the county should not have ever been presented at the time
because neither of the other constituent groups had discussed it. So, I feel the county was way off on that. Now, they're going to have to go back to their Board of County Commissioners once we get an approved document, and I, I.
But it sounds like it's been vetted now at this point with county staff, with the exception of me.
Well, yeah, we're getting it, yeah.
Yeah. County administration has made it clear that once we have a document acceptable by the school board, they'll be looking to take that draft back to their county commission.
Yep, 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 yep.
So, the only blip now is B.
Correct.
Right. So, I mean, I'm thankful for the, the changes that were made by our school board attorney. I don't think they're doing any changes from the city of Benel. They'll probably take whatever we add because their, their responsibility is relatively clear.
Correct.
And that should do it. And the, say, the Flagler County Sheriff Office goes with the county, so we should be okay.
Now, this, this was posted when to Board docs? Was this posted today?
This was posted yesterday, when, after we got our change from the county.
Okay. So, I just, the reason I ask that, because we had some public comment with some concerns about some of the language there. I don't know, they may have seen the older one, not the, the current one, so you might want to update.
And this is labeled as 18, School Board Revisions 1824.
Well, I think we're on the same page now. We, we get that cleared up, we should be good to go.
So, for taking this back to the county side, I just want to make sure I, I have the board clear. As far as the setting of fees at the Carver Center, do you guys feel that should remain with the school board? Or that's where I would like some of, from some guidance?
I, I think it's, I think it should, personally, I think it should remain with us.
I do.
If we can come to agreement on that, I think that, that is a good place for it to be. You know, we're, we're more involved with that community and, and also the, the, what I'm, my only concern is.
It's what we've been doing.
What's the matrix that, that is deter, that is used to determine what those rates will be? Because, for example, if you're looking at comparables, right, you know, Benel's a unique city. It says that there's only one facility like this, right? So, there isn't really like a lot of comparison on rate structure. Like, I wouldn't want to, to say, okay, we're going to compare it to the Palm Coast Community Center, right, which is a little bit different venue than, than the Carver Center to use to determine, hey, that's where our rates should be. So, that would be my, my.
Our rates, we discussed when we, when we approved our rates, we were very fair as a school board.
I mean, the bottom line is.
And they were fair, and it was geared towards the city of Benel that it would work. Because, I mean, in some cases, you have one person right in the facility for a small church group, okay? So, we can't, you can't charge them an astronomical amount of money. That's where their church meets, you know, so we worked out.
Is the county complaining about the fees that are being collected?
No, I don't think so.
So, if it's not, it's not a problem, it's not broken, it should just be left.
The way it is.
The way it is.
That's our, our.
That would be, we have consensus on that, yeah?
Yeah, we have consensus. Let's, let's move forward with that to try and retain that within this agreement that we would, we would set our fees.
And, and that doesn't write PAL out. What it does, it gives the new ILA the way it's supposed to be. PAL's going to have to use facility use agreements, working with Bonita, and they'll sit down and schedule, and they can schedule their activities, but then if they don't have activities scheduled at certain times, she can add in other activities so that the facility's getting as much use as it can.
I don't think that's what they're talking about doing at all.
Well, they need to. That's part of the agreement.
Okay, now, so, that's not, Cheryl.
I, I know.
The agreement is with the sheriff's department.
Right now, it is, yes.
Sheriff's Department.
Is going to be able to use Facilitron to get.
Right, in, in this agreement, the way I read it, and if I'm not reading it right, definitely somebody correct me, is that the sheriff will have the ability to schedule those portions, that small piece of the facility.
Outlineing the map.
That's outlined in the map.
And the joint.
They will schedule that. The school district will have the rest of the facility and responsible for scheduling.
Our, will have our areas, and then there is a joint area.
Joint, your joint.
Right.
That we both, we come together.
They're going to work together to schedule.
And we will do a, a meeting every six months where we look at the forecast of.
Major events.
Of what's, who's going to use, well, hey, can you, I'm having this event.
That'll work.
You know, we will work that out with the sheriff and the school board.
And, yeah, that'll work. It can work.
Yeah, and I want, I just wanted to address, you know, I, I, I agree that this, this is, uh, uh, we've gotten to a place now where I think this makes more sense as an ILA where, you know, it, it, the, the equal, you know, as I read an ILA definition, it's, it's about having government entities with equal, you know, powers. So, we're not duplicating services.
Exactly.
And it doesn't, uh, but there is a mention of them in the whereas. And I think that is an area where some of the community were a little bit concerned. I've spoken with some this last few days. And I just wanted to clarify that because it's my understanding that the whereas area is not necessarily a legally binding area. I wanted to ask Attorney Gavin, is that, this is more of just saying the intent and why we're doing this, what?
Yeah, the whereas clauses are how we are arriving at this. It's the setting up of the information to provide where we get the authority, how we have the authority, how we have the need, why we as a government entity have the ability to enter into this type of an agreement. So, that's what the whereas clauses are. The key framework of what is actually being agreed to are contained within the articles.
Okay, so, basically, after where it says now, therefore, is that, should the community look at that and say, now, that's where everything is the binding language.
The binding language comes below.
Below that.
The above is where we get the authority to do what we're seeking to do.
And, you know, I, I know that there's, some community members have expressed that the, the selection of PAL, in their opinion, may not be the best, but the sheriff in this, in this agreement feels that that is the best partner for them at the moment, and that whereas is basically just putting that out there to the community, saying this is our intent, right? But it is not binding that, that PAL be there forever if, because even in, in, in the body of the agreement under the school board, it says, "The school board may also utilize the assistance of other partners with programming activities which may include outside nonprofit groups, private vendors, volunteers, and other groups," right? So, we have the same ability to do that, just like the sheriff would in this agreement, which means that right now, he's telling the community, hey, we, right now, we just want to be transparent. PAL's the one we want to go with out of the gate. But if PAL, for some reason, does not live up to those, the expectations of the sheriff or decides to move on to something else, the sheriff could choose another entity to, to fill that void, right? So, is that, is that correct? It's not, they're, they have no other superiority other, over any other nonprofit in town that could, could facilitate that service, right, right through this agreement.
Right.
Right, that is the one, because he, is that, the sheriff's going to have a separate agreement with PAL to, to facilitate these programs, correct?
I, I'm not sure how the, how the sheriff interacts with.
But it's not, it's not a contractual requirement through the ILA that PAL be that person indefinitely.
No, the agreement's with the sheriff's office.
Right. So, if the sheriff decides to, to make a change on his own, he, he's well within his right to do that, right? At any given time, within his, okay. I think that's, uh, this is, so it's not locked in, it's not forever, and, or, but if they're doing a great job, the sheriff may say, hey, this is working out great, so we just keep renewing with them, right? Okay.
And, go ahead. Well, um, I just, I feel like we have a community of people here who we've heard from a lot. And I feel like a lot of what they're saying is very kind of lightly being discussed or even not at all being discussed. Does anybody at the table know the why of why PAL at the community center? And full dis, uh, dis, transparency, I don't know all of the PAL programs, right? Do they all need a gymnasium? That the community center wouldn't work, a library wouldn't work. Like, does anybody have the background of why the Carver Center?
PAL's been with us a long time, obviously, okay? They've been an active agent.
And always at the Carver Center?
Well, yeah, but not just the Carver Center. They've been at a lot of various sites. They use Fields, Benel.
I know they've been at the middle, I think they've been at the middle school with.
Depends where they can find the necessary space to enact the different programs because they do have wonderful, they have wonderful mentoring program for girls that generally meets at the youth center. There's a lot of different places they use. They've used Carver a lot, okay? I mean, they have volleyball programs that have been there as long as that I can remember, okay? And that's fine. And now, what happened is this, this, this growth is going to give them a place. Boxing's been one of the number one goals PAL's had, to bring boxing into our area. It's a big program in PAL, big program. Latka has one of the best programs in the state of Florida, and he's a person who coaches it, lives here in Palm Coast. So, they've been trying to get boxing for a very long time. They can't find any place to put it. And taking over the back rooms over there, the one back room is going to give them that space they need to start their boxing program. So, that's one program I would guarantee you'll probably see start is boxing, all right? They do floor hockey. They do a lot of different things, and they, like I said, they do have mentoring programs that they can expand on. PAL's a really big national agency, and they try to work as close to them as they possibly can. The sheriff pays for an officer to work with them, okay? And then, rest of it is money that they basically raise through their charges. That's what they charge people to play, and they have scholarships for those that cannot afford.
Or they get donations from the community.
Yeah, they get donations, a lot of community donations. So, they've been around a long time. They're just looking for, I think, a permanent place to call home. They have been bounced all over this county in different kinds of facilities.
And is there nowhere, and I guess, just as a person who's kind of listening to all of it, it sounds, you know, I, I have known Ms. Daisy now for a little bit. My understanding is she's born and raised in Benel. What I'm hearing is that the Carver Center is not just a building.
Correct.
To families like Ms. Daisy.
Oh, very, very.
And I feel like when we're having these discussions, we're talking about it as if it's a facility, right? And not even, maybe not doing the due diligence of considering what it is to, to the whole community. And so, just as I'm listening to everything. And so, just as I'm listening to everything, my mind, where my mind goes to is like, man, I wish Teresa Rizzo could be in here and like listen to everybody and some, you know, her brilliance and kind of putting things together, you know? Do we have dedicated days, you know, dedicated days for the Bonnell community that, you know, there's no fees, there's no, nothing else on the schedule? I just, I guess where my mind keeps going to is, God, there has to be, I know we have to do this ILA and there's contracts and whatnot, but I just, it feels so unresolved that I just can't imagine we can't better come to the table and be, if nothing else, as a school district, a school board, be an advocate, just to make sure that maybe there's just at least some more consideration of what this building is to the larger community, so.
And I, I agree Sally, but that's basically where we started when this whole partnership began back in two, early 2000, okay? That it was not closed. They, the county was closing the building.
Because they're funding it.
They, they own the building.
Yeah.
They're going to close it because it was just costing them money, they didn't see any purpose for it.
Yeah.
That's when the school board got involved because they were going to bring structure, bring bodies, it was going to start to be useful. They did, and that's where we got, so they pay everything.
So this is like the compromise.
Yeah, exactly.
Right? It's like, we'll continue to fund it, and so it can't just be a facility.
And keep people active in it. Now that the renovations are done, there's more rooms to have, there's more things to do, you know? And, and the more we can bring in there, the better for the community, and it gives the community more options too. And that's why we have to try to keep the fees down so they can still have their small little church or whatever it is they need, a meeting, they want to have a meeting. Or, like you said, free. Kids go there to play basketball every day for free. You don't get that a lot of places. You just don't get that. So, and, and you're right, we need to keep it to the community. It is a community treasure, it truly is.
But also things cost money.
Yes.
Right, and so that's, that's-
We have paid bills, we have paid bills.
In this conversation here, I'd like to just use this to segue into something that, so now, most of you have heard from Mr. Eric Josie. He's been part of the conversation for quite a while, has come here for public comment. Um, he has, uh, you know, I've, I've met with him one-on-one. I have also spoke with him on the phone several times. We, you may have received emails from him, and he's been providing some input. A lot of it had to do with the PALs being part of the ILA and not being part of their, that's been resolved, right? And so, you know, I, I, he had asked today if he could be part of this conversation, and I said, you know, well, we understand your position, we know what, what you're, where you are, right? And some of that has been resolved, and, but he feels he has some, maybe some more information that might be helpful to this conversation, even though we're getting closer to the end. So, uh, I wa, I wa, I told him I would leave it to the board if we had consensus to do so. If you feel that it could be helpful to, to hear him bring some additional information forward, I would bring him up to, to talk during this agenda item. So, uh, I'm going to ask, is there consensus, and would you, could you, would you find value in that conversation?
I don't have a problem with that.
He's invested a lot of time.
Before we do that, can I ask for a clarifying question? I, I want to, I don't want to gloss over the concern that Mr. Williams brought up because to a degree, you know, we could say it's the elephant in the room, but it is, it, it is, it's a discussion point. And so I just want clarification. Is the Sheriff's Department going to be utilizing this as like an outpost? Or is it simply going to be for sports and athletic programming? Or, or is the Sheriff intending on actually posting up deputies there?
To our knowledge and what we've talked about, the only staff that would be representing the Sheriff's Office, there would be their director, which is a, which is a deputy, and then their civilian staff worker. That is their strictly for PAL program.
Okay, okay, okay. Because that, there-
Good point, that's a good point.
Because there is a concern. You, you, you want it to be a facility where the, the students, the, the children continue to come. And there may be relationships that need to be built, but the idea that that would be an issue or a hindrance, I, I think, I don't want to ignore that point.
Absolutely.
But, but I think when I brought up Teresa Rizzo, like, that was actually part of my thought process. It's like, that, that is a thing. If this is going to be what it's going to be, is there anything we can do from our end? Events, whatever, and that's where she's like, she's so good, right? Where we can, is there a place to make that up completely?
That's a, that's a community-
Just the point, the Ed Foundation is involved with the Carver Foundation now. So I think you're going to see more of that partnership, and it, it'll lead into all the, with Ed, yeah, Mary, is there a-
And I think, and Bonita, there are a lot of great things that happen at the Carver, at the Carver Center already. And just even a simple conversation around, like, you know, before, if you were to look at the calendar, you know, it just stated open gym, which leads you to believe that it's just students and children playing basketball.
Free for all.
But it's really not. And so, um, if she has been very pointed and targeted to make sure to highlight the different events that are actually happening.
Yes.
Because, you know, before you could do it, and she could make, because nobody else was in there other than the people through use of facilities. But, you know, now that all of this attention has now come to, well, what's happening in the Carver Center, and almost this assumption that, um, great programs aren't happening, which is completely untrue. There are a lot of great things that happen in the Carver Center every single day. And so, um, yes, we do have, it, um, the Ed Foundation hosting events there. We have our schools hosting events there. And though those things have always happened, we are being more specific to get that information on the calendar for those who maybe are under the implication that programming isn't happening there every day.
And just to clarify, I think what I was referring to in case it was lost is, um, if the Carver Center has been something for years and there has been kind of some change, some change, and I, I get it, it's in an effort to keep the building open, but, um, is there, is there some type of a, a space where different groups can come together? Just, you know, so the thing, we're not foreign to each other, right? That was kind of what I was-
There's also the community center too, right? Like-
Well, it is now, yeah. Are you going to send up there or theirs?
No, what's it called, right?
I do want to make, no-
The reversal east center?
Yeah.
Right next to it.
With this agreement, there is still the Carver Advisory Group. So we used to have the Carver Governance Board. With this agreement, that switches to the Carver Advisory Group, which does provide a voice from the community as well as stakeholders such as the school board, the county, the city of Bonnell, the Sheriff's Office. It's an opportunity where they come together quarterly to look at the programs and things happening at the Carver Center and provide input to, hey, we would really like to see, you know, these type of events happen. We maybe will want to see kickball. It gives them an opportunity with certain community voices in addition to those, uh, community stakeholders to come together.
Isn't there someone who represents PAL that is a part of it?
Uh, the Sheriff's Office is a part of it. So Chief David Williams, who is in the audience today, we are designating.
He's been doing it for a while.
He's always there, yeah.
Yeah, he's, he's good.
Correct.
Good, good representation.
All right, so do I have consensus?
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Josie, if you'd please come up and-
Thank you.
Join us.
Thank you, thank you everybody, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for inviting me.
Thank you for coming.
I, I had a script, I had a plan, but, uh, being, and I'm kind of glad I waited to make the presentation because there's a lot I want to discuss, okay? So just as a little background, for those that don't know me, I've been here since 2003, 2005. I began my work in, um, Flagler County NAACP for a great deal of time, and I did a lot of work in the community, in the Bonnell community. I'm widely known in the Bonnell community. I'm entrusted on a variety of issues where they didn't even have mailboxes when I came into town. Now they got mailboxes and mail services, so that was huge, working directly with the postmaster. So this is what I do. How I got here, they invited me. Ms. Daisy asked me to come in and sit in on the ILA committee. And, uh, at first I was reluctant, but I'm glad I did. I did, and, and here we are today. So I want to bring something to your attention, it's very clear, because I, I used to see, we were kind of anxious busting out of the table because I didn't understand where they're coming from. I spoke a great deal with the community, and I appreciate, I want to say this at the outset, that your acknowledgement of how important the community is to this conversation. What we heard back there was the county, the Sheriff's Office, PAL, school board, you know, just going, kind of going back and forth, and the county's on the outside. Thus, that's why I'm here, okay? It's vitally important, and having go up in, in a community, I know, I understand what a community center, oh, means in the community, I'm sorry, I'll go back to you.
No, it's okay.
Um, and what, I've been through PAL. When I was on a police off, when I was on a police force, I was in community cops. I love PAL, okay? I love YMCA, that's how I grew up, and that's how I'm here before you today. So I just want to make that clear as a foundation. So when you talk about, just want to get to the first point, when you talk about fees, I want to be very clear about that argument. It should lie directly with the school district, period, full stop, okay? The community has trust, a built relationship and trust with the school board, with the school district, okay? And the fees, and, and just what you said, you know, you examine the community, you know what the community's needs are, and you know how much they could afford coming into this community. It should wholly rely, and I think you made this conversation before, Cheryl, in regards to, it should be one chief. The one chief in this, that should be involved is the school district. That's, that's, that's who the community trusts, okay? So in order to us to go forward, and, and if you want to have any kind of accomplishment on this ILA, we got to begin from that premise, okay? Secondly, I read the ILA on last minute notice. You know, stayed up all night, made sure I got my I's, T's, my T's caused my I's, I stayed up because it came, it came out late. So yes, we did have discussions in regards to it. So there's a couple of things I want to bring out to it. First of all, I want to thank the work that you have done on it because a lot of what our biggest concerns was removed. I acknowledge that, I do, I see a great deal. However, I want to talk about the Trojan horse. The Trojan horse in this case is the PAL. I sat down in the community meetings with the PAL director, with the Sheriff, and, and again, full disclosure, I was one with the Sheriff Office, so they know me, Mr. Williams knows me, Chief Williams knows me, everybody knows me in the Sheriff Office, including the Sheriff himself, okay? So I have a broad range of relationships and affiliation. In this case, as I have gone through the process of sitting with the ILA, and, and he's been great as well, you know, I've been taken back at this push for the ILA and this, this monster of attitude coming from the Director of ILA, which caused me to look further into the statute. And make a long story short, I'm not going to belabor the point. At the end of the day, in a whereas, let me be very clear, the whole agreement is binding. There's no one part is not binding or whereas is not binding. The whole agreement is binding. And it's clearly that the Trojan horse, the PAL, is the, is what's going to come into the, upon execution of this, of this ILA. Even though you remove PAL and you put the Flagler County Sheriff Office in this place, we under, it's, it, I, I want to be very clear about this, and, 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 listen, you know, you can look it up, or whatever the case is, and I, and I urge this board to verify what I'm saying. There is no such thing as a facility use agreement in the ILA, period, in the state of Florida, period. And I encourage your, your counsel to look it up. Number two, it's got to be separate, I already said that, okay? And number three, the Flagler Sheriff Office has no authority legally, or legally, over the PAL. The authority over the Flagler Sheriff, PAL, or any PAL is under the authority on the national PAL, which has board of directors, which has bylaws, which has regulations. Now, there's been a lot of confusion because we have obviously a, a member of the Sheriff Office that's executive director. That is executive director, that is common. You know, there are law enforcement that have taken some positions voluntarily, and employment-wise with it. They're still separated. This is what you call a conflict of interest. It's got to remain separated. So on that note, even though you made the, even though you tried, amended it in a certain way, the Flagler Sheriff Office cannot report whatsoever, and I believe on a legal sound grounds, because I encourage you to find an identical ILA where the PAL is in the ILA that's reported by the Sheriff Office or any county or any city in the state of Florida. It does not exist at all, period. Now, if you show one, if you, if, I, I encourage you to refrain or hold back from the opinion. Let's get a, let's get a, a, a like-minded, a similar ILA where it says facility use agreement and ILA, it don't exist, but I'd like to see one, that's been executed in the state of Florida, or where you see the Sheriff Office reporting to use a PAL, a P, a, a PAL in an ILA. It's only permissible in a facility use agreement, okay? We have no problem. You, you could write, you could execute a facility use agreement, or MOU, or, you know, a lease contract, whatever you want to do. When you talk about an ILA, and it's very clear on the law, this is not just a law, it's an act that was created in 1969. And it has no place for the PAL, period, even if you take it out. So I want to be clear about that. And I hope that we could come together and, and this does not be a situation, hey, we got to endorse it, and everybody endorse it, because, you know, even after you endorse it, you guys are not the final say. And I hope we don't have to resort to that. You understand what I mean? You're not the final say. So why not put that aside and maybe we could lower tensions about this whole thing? Bring it down and talk about how we could do this with a facility use agreement with the school district and the PAL. And maybe, and maybe the PAL himself could come in and talk about what he wants to do. This hot, this shadow and recessing back into the Sheriff's Office behind the Sheriff, behind the Flagler Sheriff Office title, in this, it's not going to work. It's, it's, it's not going to pass muster. And I hope we don't have to, you know, go to that tax, and I already said before, don't, you don't have to believe me. We could run this, I gave you two questions, I sent up, everybody here an email on this board. And I gave you two questions that you could copy and paste to the Attorney General for an opinion. Two weeks, a two-week turnaround, at no cost. Now, if, if you go ahead and execute this agreement, where, you know, everybody's just leaving out the community, I'm telling you it's not going to stand, even, even after execution. And what's going to happen is, everything's going to be stayed, and we back a square one, just, just holding our thumbs about what's going to happen next. Let's not go, let's not go around the circle, it's not waste time. Execute a facility use agreement.
Can I ask, can I ask a question? Mr. Josie?
Yes, yes ma'am.
So, just to fully understand, are you saying for, for an ILA to exist, it would simply only be between governmental entities?
No.
Meaning, meaning, meaning school district, county, not sheriff, county, a city, city of Bonnell?
Right.
Right? And that, and that's it? And then outside of that, you would have, just like we do now, a use of facilities agreement that would be utilized by whether it's PAL, whether it's another entity or organization, that that would be how that would go if it was to be utilized?
I appreciate the question, and here's the answer. I always just go back to what the law says. Statute 163.11 is very clear on it, and I, I kind of, you know, I, I think I'm not sure how many legal rights I gave to you guys, but it's very clear on it. The only exception to a private entity, as we're discussing, whether it's a 501(c) organization, the only exception is legal, PAL is not, it's not a legal entity. Administrative, this is, I'm saying is verbatim, it's not administrative. Or, and, it's got to be created as a direct result of the ILA, meaning the PAL has, can never existed before. In other words, you, it's created, and that's what the law says. So I, I revert back to the law, and I stand on that. And that's where this whole thing is going to fail. Yes ma'am?
Yeah, quick question, I mean, because you're, you're bringing up, you're bringing up the organization PAL again, right? So, and I know, I understand your comment of like the Trojan horse, like I get it. But as far as like the contract, it would help me to, to stay with all of the discussion-
Yes ma'am.
Like of what, like not Trojan horse, and hey, I think I know what they're trying to do here, but what is the actual organization? So to the question, is the, is the Sheriff's Office being in the mix of the contract? And they are, correct? Is that, are they, because they are, they are public, right?
Sure.
Is that, because I get it, we're saying PAL is in there, but now it's not in the contract. So is the Sheriff's Office, is the Sheriff allowed to be part of it?
Of course, let me answer that question. If this, and, and I understand it's been raised whether or not there was a security, uh, there was a, whether it's crime inside or outside, I don't believe it, I've been around the community several times, I haven't seen it. But say for the sake of argument, this is a purpose of community safety, you want the Sheriff come in? Absolutely. You have to, the Sheriff execute an ILA agreement with the school district, as you do with the school resource offices, and it's, it's agreement, and you bring in, whether my deputies to secure the facility. They cannot purport to take on an activity, management, I think I seen, programming, that's not in their domain, under their authority at all, okay?
The Sheriff's Department.
The Sheriff's Department.
Right now, today.
But there, well, the thing that I'm a little confused on is that in the title itself, it does mention the word facility use agreement, but it's very clear now that it said it's between Flagler County, Flagler County School District, Flagler County Sheriff, and the city of Bonnell regarding the George Washington Carver community. So in essence, PAL has nothing to do with this facility use agreement. They're the, they're the nonprofit that the Sheriff is choosing to facilitate the activities that, that they want to do in their part of the gym. Just like when we, in, in that language I said down here for the school board, we also in turn could- we also in turn could use nonprofits to facilitate programs within our part, part of the, the gym as well.
In a facility use agreement.
Right, so, but essentially, the, the, the facility use agreement here is not with PAL the way I read this. I, I don't, I don't, see, the only mention now to PAL is in the whereas area.
Right.
So, are you saying that if, uh, since it's not really a, a binding thing?
It's binding.
Well, okay, well, let, I'll give you the benefit of doubt, let's say it's binding, right? So, if, if, if it was binding and, and, and the sheriff took out the mention of PAL in the whereas, um, would that satisfy the community on that, on that concern?
Well, let me, let me ask you this, let me answer this. First of all, again, there's no such thing as a combination facility use agreement in the ILA. I researched many of the decisions from the attorney general. You could go there, you could look at all the opinions relative to ILA. She's very clear on it, and what the ILA is, its purposes, so it's not the first time this argument has come up. And it's failed several times across the state. So, my point to your question is, if you take all that out, what is the godly purpose of the sheriff's office to be there walking around the gym doing what? You know, it just doesn't make any sense, other than security. I mean, so, he, 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 he can't, he can't proffer that the sheriff's office is going to come in and do what? I mean, I mean, it got to be programming, all that's relative to the P A O. Everything, every function that you're purporting for this sheriff's office to do in this ILA is P A O activities.
So, uh, board, I just, I just want to, because in this conversation, it's a good, good conversation. But, um, what, what I'm, my hope is here is that we can, uh, number one to ask is, is, is there any more direct questions for Mr. Georgie based on what he brought up?
Josie.
I'm sorry, Mr. Josie. Um, because if not, I would like him to, to, to summarize what he, out of what he shared with us, what he, what ultimately?
What's a win-win?
Yeah, at the end of the day, what would, what would make the community happy at the end of the day within this interlocal agreement? So that, so that we need, we need points to, to work on.
I, I got you, I got you. Now, I, you, you asked me probably about, you know, about fifteen times, and I, I kind of, you know, kind of go different ways, and I, I understand that, because we want to resolve this matter, we want to settle this matter. But I cannot go back to these spaces right here and tell them that we're not on legal basis in, in them signing this agreement, we were right. I cannot do that, unless, of course, it's a standalone ILA. I already told, I already told them, if this was a facility use agreement, I couldn't help you. I couldn't help because it's a facility use agreement. So, whatever you want to do with facility, possession of prerogative, is in your, uh, home rule powers, no problem. But you're talking about ILA and what can be done. The only thing I can see relative to at this point, that, you, you're looking at me, but you're not going to like it, is dissolve this ILA and executing a, a, an agreement, a facility use agreement, standalone agreement, between the school district, the school board, and the, and the P A O, which is common across the state of Florida, anywhere.
But how can we, how can we do that when we've got an ILA? The ILA is required because we've got sharing of the facility, the county is paying for the staff, they're paying for them. I mean, there are elements of the ILA that are needed. If we're talking about the use of facilities and a need for a separate document, okay, that, fine. But the ILA just can't be absolu, like it just can't be thrown out.
Okay, let's say based on, okay, so all I can tell you, if you desire to go forward this ILA, the, this, I'm trying to use my words very carefully, inference of the Flagler County Sheriff Office or the sheriff purporting to you have any involvement in managing, uh, programming, all I can, everything relative to the P A O has to come out, period, altogether. So, if, if, if you, if, if you're that, is that your concern, you have every right to do that. That, you know, you're public entities, I understand that. But once you, you, once you incorporate the organization, the five-one C organization, that's not legal, that's not administrative, that hasn't been created, is that, but, but you want to use their, uh, uh, activities in, in here, it's not going to cut mustard, it's not, it's not going to happen. I mean, it's just, I, I, I mean, the, the attorney general's opinion bears that out. If you just go there and look at the previous opinions.
So, if we take out, but if it just is an interlocal agreement, scratch the facility use agreement.
That's, that's a great start.
Just like it's all been before.
Absolutely.
Okay, just like, except now we have the sheriff's office in there. We can still keep the sheriff's office.
Absolutely.
But we have to ax out the, uh, whereas five-one-one-four-C-three with PAL, that would have to also go.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, and then that would, that would suffice as an I, a new ILA. But what we would need to do also is make up a, a facility use agreement.
Absolutely, there you go.
For, for the sheriff's representation.
Absolutely. Legally, legally, you're absolutely right. And absolutely, what she just said, but, 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 show me how, you just said, you got it.
I got it.
It's very clear, so we're all very clear. Take out facility use agreement, that's a non-starter, right?
Does that, that throws the ILA right out?
So, now, when you, when you, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
So, when you, if you want to do anything with a P A O, chief, good to see you. If you want to do anything with a P A O, uh, it's going to have to be a separate facility use agreement. Uh, no problem with that, what you do with that, that's, that's, you know, I hope you invite the community as a say-so, but, uh, you, you won't be hearing as far as, uh, Mr. Edward Josie pounding the table that as a man right now sweating. All right, so, I mean, it'll be a different kind of agreement, so absolutely, so what you said is right. Uh, as far as the entities, you, you, we already talked about that, that's, that's, that's what the facility, uh, use agreement, I'm sorry, what the ILA is for, period.
Well, I would imagine that the sheriff would have had, under the, under the way this is written, right, the sheriff would have to have some agreement with PAL or any entity outside of this ILA, whether it's the, the facility use agreement or some other. Um, but I think that the facility use agreement was put with, in the title was there because that was the intention out of the game. But it almost doesn't matter anymore, right?
It doesn't fit.
Because we're, we are, it's, we're interlocal agreement now, and, uh, there is no other entity outside of that. I mean, it could apply that we're, the facility use agreement is between all of us, but it's almost really, doesn't really serve a purpose in the title.
Could, could we hear from Chief Williams?
Yes, uh, Chief Williams, please.
Hi, good afternoon, thank you very much. I have a lot to say, but I will speak specifically to what we're talking about right now with interlocal agreements. So, the sheriff has several interlocal agreements throughout the county with several entities to provide the services that a sheriff's office provides, which generally speaking is law enforcement services, but it's not always law enforcement services. We also provide mentoring, we have victims advocates, we provide many other services. So, if the big hang-up here is to strike PAL off of the interlocal agreement, strike PAL off of the interlocal agreement, the sheriff is still going to provide services at the center, which, um, consists of mentoring, sports activities, and things like that. The employees who represent the sheriff's office will still be already encarried because they are sheriff's office employees. Their checks are signed by the sheriff, not PAL, and they are on the sheriff's payroll. They don't work, excuse me, they don't work for PAL, they work for the Flagler County Sheriff. So, if that's the hang-up, that's fine. The whole point of the interlocal agreement slash facility use agreement is because of the, and the, um, resources being brought in by all of the partners that are part of the interlocal agreement. The sheriff is bringing ten thousand dollars a year, as is the school, as is the city of Benel, in addition to staff. So, if you strike that part out and just say interlocal agreement, well, the city of Benel's not providing any staff. So, the sheriff shouldn't have to provide any staff. That's not what we want to do, we want to provide staff. We want to extend the hours of operation by having people there at night, especially this time of year, it's getting dark, to have someone there that the facility can stay open later and have more use, as we stated, more use for the facility. Our intention ever was to come in and take over the facility. And that's why if you look at attachment A showing the areas that the sheriff's office would have basically primary control over, because we don't own it, it's a very small part of the gym, of the facility, sorry, I mean to call it gym. It's a very small part of the facility. That shows right there that the intention ever was to take over the entire facility. We're very happy with the small part that we have, that we can. And as was mentioned earlier, yes, PAL has been around for a long time. We have provided services for the community for a long time, and we do need a home. How can I tell you that I'm going to run a football league and I don't have a field to run the, the league from? Who's going to sign up to play, you don't even know where I'm going to play. So, yes, a big part of PAL's or the sheriff's interest in getting into the facility is to have a permanent home where you will see just what PAL can do for the community, because now with a permanent home, a lot of programs we've had to hold back on, we will be able to provide, because we will have a place and a time to say this is where these facilities, I'm sorry, programs will be held. So, that is our reason for wanting to get into the facility. Now, another thing that came up, and I just did a quick Google search, I didn't even delve into it, but something came up earlier about how many other cities in Florida have PAL mixed in with their city community centers? The city of Melbourne, the city of Ormond Beach, the city of Port St. Lucie, the city of Lakeland, the city of Cocoa Beach, the city of Cape Canaveral.
Under what agreement?
PAL and the community center. The question was how many other city communities?
Of course, yeah, of course.
Joined with a PAL sheriff's or police office?
But not under ILA?
Well, I don't know, I didn't go that far.
Well, that's, well, that's what I'm talking about.
Wait, I didn't interrupt you, please don't interrupt me, okay? I was just looking up based on the question that came up earlier. I wasn't asked the question, I just did a Google search as anyone could do to see, because I said, you know what, that is a good question. How many other cities? And boom, there's six right off the bat. I didn't delve into it to see what the ILA was or anything else. I did read to see what they're doing, they're doing exactly what we're proposing to do. Provide PAL services to the city, partnering with those cities and using that city facility.
Under facility use agreement.
They need a facility to partner. And in the one, I want to say it was Lakeland, one of them, it's right on their sign, that it says PAL along with the city, Lakeland City PAL on their sign. My point being that this is not unique. Everyone's making the same, oh, my God, no one in the world has ever done this before. There's six cities in Florida that are doing it currently.
Not under ILA, chief, not under ILA.
You know, here's the thing, is that ultimately, I don't, whether or not, in, in the agreement, this part of it, I believe is, is under the sheriff's purview on who they're going to choose to, to facilitate this part of that program. We're, we're one entity in this interlocal agreement, and we are the school board, right? So, uh, just like we have our programs that we're going to be running there, the sheriff's not going to just tell us, you know, hey, you have to choose this person. I think it's, we're not in the place to tell the sheriff in this, as a partner in this agreement, who's going to run his programs, right? Uh, but I think when I'm just going back in time, the concern was, is that PAL was being given some sort of equal, um, equal footing with government entities.
It started out that way.
The way it was written in there, right?
It started out that way.
Right, so, and we've gotten past that, and now we've removed that now. Um, so, at this point forward, um, what, what I see here is that we've, we've solved that, that problem, uh, and I, I appreciate you bringing that up, uh, and, and we all learned from that and, and, and modified this agreement to where it is today. And the last place that this is in here is in the whereas statement. And so, the question I have for you is that if we remove that from there, because no matter how we change this, I, 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 at least from my perspective, I, I, I'm not going to, I would not want to limit the sheriff's office and tell them who they, who they can and cannot use to facilitate their program, just like I wouldn't want, I don't want to have that latitude on, on our end as well, right? So, at the end of the day, where can we, within the body of this document, where can we move forward? Where the, where the community that, you know, has, has, uh, brought you to be their, their representative, uh, where can we finally close this chapter so that we can move forward, right?
Sure, two things, as I said before. If the agreement is modified to a place and it goes to Mrs. Michelle's, uh, showed Michelle's point before, it can't be three cooks in the kitchen, it's got to be one chief, okay? So, we, if, if we, uh, it's my understanding, and, you know, they're right behind me, they were, I'm sure they hit me in the back of my head if I say anything otherwise, that the school district and the school board is who they have trust with, uh, up until now. Since two thousand and eleven, you had operational control of, of, of these matters that's going on. They live well with that, they're, they're pleased with that. So, I, I know at one point, uh, I think Chief Williams used my words one time, I should have trademarked it, he said priority. I said priority and parity. All he enough, he said, all he enough, he said, he used my words, but you know, the, the truth of the matter is, I don't, I don't think sheriff's office should be in a place of priority and parity. I think when it comes down to any kind of dispute, that's all I'm saying, when it comes down, that's all I'm saying. When it comes down to, okay, was it issue with the scheduling or something going on? Who's ultimately the decision-maker, the arbiter? And I, I say, I say the school district, I, I say the school board, whoever, I, I, I say it lies in between y'all two, or whatever. I'm just saying that it lies here as a final decision-maker. This, or, you know, we collaborate and all that kind of stuff, and I may even say something else. But when, even though the Carver, they changed it from the Carver to governance to the Carver ILA.
Advisory.
Yes, huh?
Advisory.
Advisory, oh, yeah, what did I say?
ILA.
Okay. Uh, Carver ILA Committee. Um, they, they, they have raised concerns, and I, and I kind of see it unfolding in this agreement. They're just simply not going to have any say at all, period, at all. And I also want to put on the table, and I don't want to get too far ahead, but, um, all I can say is that the governance board is now re-examining their funds or their situation in, in this ILA, period. So, that's, uh, on the, without saying anything more in regards to that. So, I just want to bring those two things up. It must come back to community, school district, school board, at the, as a final decision-maker or arbitrator of, arbitrar of anything that's going on, if there's any kind of dispute, okay? Uh, that will lend a lot of credence in these tensions about, you know, who has say and who doesn't have say, but as I have read it, it's sort of that, uh, priority and parity. Uh, and I understand, listen, I understand it, the sheriff, and I understand, uh, Chief Williams, and, you know, I understand that. But at the end of the day, this is a communal facility. This is not a, a school, you know, this is not a school or a gym and all that kind of stuff. Most of the agreements, and I've been involved in P A O for a long time, and most of the P A Os I have seen, agreements that I have seen was a lease, contract, M O U, it was never a, a, a form of an ILA. I'm telling you, it has no place, even with reference to the counties that was referenced by the chief here, so.
Can I just have a quick clarifying?
Are there any other questions?
I, well, I have a quick, I have a quick clarifying question, um, and Chief Williams, you may be able to kind of help clear this up. Because what I, um, as far as like who has the priority, you know, who has the final say, we're talking about space, right? I mean, essentially, right? Um, where I'm getting a little bit confused is, and this is like a stupid example, but if I own a four thousand square foot house, never will happen in my life, um, and I, hey, man, you never know. Um, I, uh, I rent out one bedroom, right? I, I should expect that the person who is renting out that one bedroom, they have, they, that's their bedroom.
Sure.
I own, and I, I have another three thousand eight hundred square feet.
They can eat cookies in their room.
Right.
So, that's their, that's their room, and they need to know that that's their room, right? Um, because they need to know that every night they can sleep there, or they, whatever. My under, my understanding is when you, my understanding is, uh, the sheriff's office is, I'm going to say two things that go together. One, my understanding, Chief Williams, if I'm, if I'm understanding you correctly, it's not mutually exclusive. Like, we will be part of the ILA so long as there is this. If there is not this, we don't want to be a part of the ILA. So, it's almost like, I know we're talking about the, um, facility use agreement, right? It kind of sounds to me like those go together a little bit.
It doesn't.
For your entity, but, and not that they should or shouldn't, but that's maybe why they go together. But everything that you keep bringing up when we hear from you is, we have this person, I don't even know what the percentages, it'd be really interesting to find out. What is your percentage of space?
Of the entire facility.
Of the entire facility. And so, it's not, my understanding is that your amount of space is not even up for grabs necessarily. Like, it is your, that is your space.
So, let me address that.
Please, thank you so much.
Thank you. So, right, the priority and parity is for the space that has been identified as sheriff's office, okay? And it essentially, boy, I can't talk today, consists of the areas denoted in peach, pink, peach, whatever, on the board there. The only areas that kind of would not be up for grabs are the offices, they're private, you got to have office space. The other room, the boxing room, whatever it's called, that's still part of the Carver Center. And if we came together as the parenting or guardian entities, whatever, the entities that control the facility, and something came up and said, hey, we need that room in the back, and we look at our schedule and say, you know what, we don't have anything going on that day, you can use the room in the back.
Yeah, that's. So, going back to my stupid one bed, like I own this bedroom, it, um, I, that's my room, I pay for it. But if that family who's rented me this room is having extra relatives show up, and I'm not, or an extra relatives, and they're going to be out, and they're, and that person who's renting them is going to be out of town for two weeks. And they're like, hey, man, cool, they could totally use my room. But, but they get to decide. So, do you? So do you guys essentially own that space? And as a community partner, should the need come up to use that space, then yes, you're approving that, but only those, that small amount of space?
That would be correct, because the idea with the area denoted by boxing is that we would set up a boxing ring there. That's not something you take up and put down every night, it's kind of a permanent structure. So yes, for the purpose of that, yes, we would want to own that, because-
Just like the offices, yeah.
Just like the offices.
So it's almost as if the Carver Center, you know, you could think of it as like, the, the Carver Center for the community exists in this square footage, you know, that had, you know, there's this, and then almost like you guys are essentially your own entity but sharing your-
Well, we're not our entity, because we were providing services for the entire community through use of the facility.
Gotcha. And I know you have a lot to say, but that's the other piece I wanted just to talk about, again, just being very just transparent about everything, because it's come up, I think, a couple of times of, and really, our focus should always be on students. That's why we're here. And so, if we have Benell students, I don't know if there's the fear of what their comfort level is, you know, I know when I was in high school, and I was having fun with my friends on Dakota Avenue, and we came across a cop at, you know, Taco Bell, I was like worried that they thought I was on drugs, because this has always been me, right? And so, I think like that's something too, I would love just to have you at some point speak to, is like, because what I'm hearing is just a comfort level there.
So Detective, Detective Earl, deputy, he used to be a detective, Earl, is a deputy sheriff at the Flagler County Sheriff's Office. He does not wear a uniform. He dresses usually in shorts and a polo shirt, that's his uniform of the day, because he represents PAL, but he does work for the sheriff. Carrie Henderson is a, we call professional support, we don't call them civilians, she's a civilian with the sheriff's office. She does not wear a uniform. Those are the two people who would be assigned to the facility, no uniforms. Now, yes, would uniform personnel occasionally come into the facility? We do now. I go there once a quarter for my meetings and other events that I go there for. So sure, uniform personnel will eventually, I'm sorry, occasionally come through the building.
Do we have any examples of conflict that students are there having fun, and all of a sudden they found themselves arrested? Like, do we, do we have anything to go off of that where there, there are concerns for something that has happened?
Can I, can I lean to that?
Please.
And I see this from my broad experience of, one, going through the P A O, as part of my, growing up, you know, in the P A O, and being on the police force with the P A O, I know there, and I was in Harlem, and it's a duty on the police force to acquire certain trust in the community. I don't see that here, at all, at all. And frankly, not with me either. And which, which causes me to, you know, be a little bit more legal than I really want to be here, okay? There has to be a trust coming in and with the sheriff's office, with the members of the sheriff's office. I'm telling you right now, there's a grave concern about uniform deputies at the doorway running names and numbers and, and preventing, and, and, and preventing people coming in, and meanwhile, uh, this kid's playing hockey on the floor. I mean, this, I'm telling you, this is a concern, it's a legitimate concern. I, I, all I can tell you is that it took years, and it took a period of time to garner the trust with the, with the, with the community. And it needs to say, we play basketball with them, they came in, they don't have to worry about us putting handcuffs on them. In fact, they came to us, you know, and give us some great intel that led to big arrests, you know, I'm just saying, you know, I'm just, as an example, that's the kind of trust we have. Unfortunately, it's just a field, we get to feel, and I'm telling you, Dave is a great man, and he's a great chief, and we've known him a very long time, but I'm just talking about the sheriff's office as a whole. I'm talking about the display of art on be, on behalf of who's the executive director of the P A O. Frankly, without, for lack of better terms, he didn't do a very good job in garnering trust and faith in what he wanted to do.
There's a relationship opportunity.
But there, but there's also, I mean, you can't start to build trust unless you start.
Oh, no, that's not true. I mean, we're all in this community here.
No, what I'm saying is you got to start somewhere.
Okay.
I just wanted to say too, that, that if, you know, we're, you know, some of this, we're getting a little bit repetitive in some of the, the concerns here, right? And the goal of this here was to bring new information, bring meaningful information that we could, uh, we can take to, to come to some decision here, right? But the, you know, if, if the goal is for the school board to, 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 to remove the sheriff from this ILA, I don't think that's going to happen, right? So, but, so then, so then, and then just using the analogies, what we're talking about here, about the house with the rooms, right? So that is their, that is their room that they're, they're being allocated, and they're being able to use, invite into those rooms whoever they see fit. And in this case, they want to invite PAL into that room. So, all I'm saying is just from, from a school board perspective, we're, we're here, we're one part of this agreement. We have our space. We're going to make sure we use the best of our space to advance education and programs for our students and our community, right? That is our side of it, right? The, the, the sheriff has their own space, and they're going to do with, with their space as they see fit, right? So, uh, uh, everything that I, I, I mean, one of the things I've heard is that there was concerns that this might turn into like a police substation, and that was a concern. Some people in the community have, has said that. And I believe that, that the sheriff has said that publicly on social media that that was not the intent. So, I mean, he's, he's put it out on the record that that is not the intent. Uh, but I, that's, that's a valid concern that has been brought up to me from, from some people in the community, right? So, um, but again, I don't know what you're, you're asking of the school board here to do to, to help you-
It's the facility usage.
Right, right, right. I think we got that clear.
Because if you talk about even parity, you talk about, you talk about parity, it's limited.
Well, that's the issue now, two weeks ago it was something else.
Well, I want to, I want to be very clear, I want to, because you make a point about that room. If it was the sheriff's office coming to that room, there's, because I see this in orange, I believe it's the sheriff's office, those orange spaces, I don't think about it, well, that's not a concern. The sheriff's office coming in, it's not a concern. You see the green space? That's, that, huh? I, that's, that's, you know, you see where I'm going, everybody? That is, that is the problem, the joint space-
We're there now.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Hear what I'm saying, hear what I'm saying. The side rooms is not the problem. The green space is the problem, number one. And number two, as I'm hearing you guys talk scheduling, the, the, the Tron system, what do you call it?
Facilitron.
Facilitron schedule. Now, and, and I already, I'm telling you, I've heard this from my own ears, from Art himself. You know, we, we're coming in, we're taking, you know, these amount of days or whatever cases, or, you know, it was a big argument about the amount of time he wanted at the table, this is during the committee, and the amount, that's, that is the problem.
Yes, let me, so, yes, I will admit to this, Artie can definitely come across a bit bossy, and I know there's a bit of tension between Artie and Benita, and possibly even between Artie and some members of the community, okay? Artie works for me, I work for the sheriff. I'm sitting here now, I represent the sheriff, I promise you, I will be the representative, Artie will be there, Artie will not be a problem. Artie's heart is of gold.
In the right place.
Artie, Artie, Artie will give you the shirt off his back. He's just, he's a big guy, military guy, comes across.
But I want to say this too, and I'm sorry, you know, you're probably going to say what I'm going to say.
But, along this process of working over all of these months, we have, at the direction of the working committee, sat down with Artie, Benita, all together, so, you know, there were things in the beginning that have since been resolved, and some of that, again, resistance stems from a lack of clarity. They, they too have had to understand what will this look like, and that work has been done. They have had those meetings, and that has not been an issue brought up since then. That has been, it was addressed. It was something that was in the beginning work, but Artie and both Benita at this time understand what their position would be if the current language were to go forward. Now, if something, if it, the language changes, then we got to bring them back to the table so that they can understand. But they, they currently know what their roles will be within this ILA.
What Chairman Fury, what I was just going to share is, this has been a great conversation, but there are elements of this conversation that are really not appropriate for public consumption. Talking about personnel is not okay with me in a public meeting. It's, I wouldn't want somebody doing that to me, and I respectfully would not want that done to anybody else. I would strongly recommend that if you want to continue this kind of a conversation, that have a side, have a side meeting with all of the entities involved, hash this out, bring whatever recommendations are back. My understanding is the major issue is that facilities is included in the ILA, and that's it. I don't think there's anything wrong, I, I believe it's appropriate to have an ILA with the county, with the sheriff's department, and with the city. Obviously, if the sheriff's department wants to use whoever to facilitate programming, the end of the day, I love the idea of kids getting access to programs like boxing and other athletic sports that they don't have now. I fully understand and respect where the community is coming from, and feel that they need to have a consistent and ongoing voice at the table. And I do believe there needs to be one ultimate, at the end of the day, decision maker, not 50 million chiefs making those decisions.
I agree.
Outside of that, we need to move on, because what I don't want to see happen, what I don't want to see happen, is I don't want to see a partner who could bring programming in, such as boxing and other athletics, who wipes their hands and says, you know what, forget it, I want no part of it. But at the same time, it all has to be put in perspective, where that is their piece, providing that programming, the community is still involved and has their hands in the programming and their piece, and the school district obviously continues with what they're doing. But respectfully, I would just ask that we table this conversation, we table the conversation.
You know, and I don't know if table, but I think that we have spoken-
Not table, not, I'm sorry, I didn't mean table in the sense of table the agenda. I just meant, I don't, I don't think it's appropriate to talk about personnel.
But we, we brought some extra people up to the table here to add, right? And, and that was, that was, the intention is for us to learn a little bit more about different perspective, so that we can build off of that. So if, if there isn't any more questions, or, then I, I'd like to bring it back to us, and we can, we can digest everything.
Yes, sure.
Okay, so thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you very much. Appreciate the time.
Go get your jacket.
I know, I will, I appreciate the time, thank you.
Getting there. We can. All right, thank you. Thank you, thank you.
So, just to reconcile some of this here, I, I, from what I see here is that if, if the title of this here was changed from interlocal agreement between, and take the facility use out, because I really don't think there's a need for that, unless legal says that it needs to be there, I don't really see a reason why facility use needs to be in the title of this agreement. And then if, and again, if it's not absolutely imperative to have PAL mentioned in the whereas, I think the public is aware, it's been put out there, there's no surprises here, that's the, that's the nonprofit, that the sheriff feels that would best suit the needs of their program, um, to, to take that out. Because again, it's not binding, the sheriff could change its mind in the future and change that provider anyway. So, um, maybe it'd just be a little bit cleaner, and it, and it wouldn't tie into some old concerns that were already resolved.
Yeah, I think the only thing that we need to be careful with is we need to, I think, be conscious of the way that we move forward with the county, um, and that this doesn't become a back and forth, back and forth, back and forth thing. Because we want to deal with this efficiently and, and appropriately. Facility, um, has been in the title, I think, since the original agreement. So, um, I don't have an issue with amending that, but I'm, I'm just saying, how we move forward with the county, I think we, we need to, I, I'm not saying tread lightly, but respectfully, we need to move this forward.
Right, because this will just keep going around in circles. And, and, and the, as far as, you know, the, the, being, the word in there really doesn't bother me if, if the county wants in there. I think it's just a matter of the, the community being reassured that the, the previous concerns are actually resolved through the modifications that we made that brought us here, which, which took PAL out of the interlocal language. So, and that's been done, but apparently, there's still feel, there's still members of the community that feel that there's still something more there. And I, and I, and I'd like to appease that, but I, I, I don't know how, what more that could be done with this agreement to, to change that.
On a final note, Chairman Fury, I would just lean into, let's shoot the question off to the Attorney General, and, I mean, if it's two weeks, it's two weeks. Then we have an answer, and we don't have to worry about it. Do you know what I'm saying?
But they, so what, the specific question, initially that question was, can a nonprofit be part of an interlocal agreement? So that was the reason why we were going to the Attorney General. So then, what, what are we now asking?
I think the question is, can a facility use agreement be part of the ILA?
ILA, yeah.
That would be the question. Ms. Gavin?
Well, I mean, currently, so for example, with the city, we have the, um, Indian Trails Fields as a facility agreement.
Yeah, that's true, I mean, we've, that's true.
And so we do have that, where we have a conversation with the city of how we have that which we own.
Oh, great. The boiler alert, the boiler. We have been tracking our, our buses, and we, we are still in a good-
Uh, tornado?
Warning.
Warning.
We're in a tornado warning.
Five thirty, five thirty.
Tommy's in the room, he'll tell us when we need to go to the stairway.
Take cover now. And we're sitting on this big green dome. So, all I'll say is-
Let them, let them work that, and they'll tell us what, where our next steps are.
All right.
We do have facility agreements that we've entered into with other governmental entities on how we are going to share those spaces pursuant to Chapter 163. That's the whole purpose of the interlocal agreements, is where we're sharing those spaces, sharing, um, so that the city or the county doesn't have to build the, those additional facilities, or the district build those additional facilities, when we can, say, the school's going to have them for this purpose, county will have them for this purpose or city. So, the, the use of the word facility incorporated into an interlocal agreement, we do that frequently.
It's not unusual.
It's not unusual. So I just wanted to point that-
No, you're right, now that I think about the facility use, is facility use in the title?
It is currently.
In the, no, I mean, in the-
With the trails.
So, we're good for any trails that cite sub-agreement between City of Palm Coast, Flagler County School District for joint maintenance of certain ITMS facilities.
So it's, so it's not an ILA?
It's an ILA.
It's a sub-agreement of the master agreement interlocal.
Okay, so shoot.
But the masters, but the master ILA sets forth all of the different properties that either we own or they own.
Okay. All right. Let's move on.
So, all right, so, we're going to conclude this-
Conversation, yeah.
Conversation here. Thank you for that.
Board, I would like to remind everybody that on Saturday at 11:30, we have the ribbon cutting for the new addition to the Carver Center, we're real excited about that.
That's this Saturday.
That's this Saturday, 11:30, and then immediately following that is the Martin Luther King Parade in downtown Benell, which we will have a school bus as well, so.
Okay.
Are you driving? I heard somebody's got their new C D L.
I just might.
All right. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board, just to FYI, I, I will be excusing myself in like five minutes.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, I had a prior commitment, and I thought we would be well done by now.
Okay, so we're going to move on to 10.02, request board review, proposed delegation policy, presenter, Mr. William Winton.
Good afternoon, Moore.
Mr. Winton, good afternoon.
Ms. Moore. I don't have an exciting topic like last one, but a couple of things have come up. The proportionate share agreements that you all have been signing off on with the different developers, there's been some things coming up under those. There's a section in that agreement that you've approved that allows for the assignment of the agreement to other partners. But since these agreements run with the land, that gets a little complicated and we felt like a formal delegation policy would be in order to correct that. I've had two examples come up lately. I don't know if y'all remember this project, the Evolve Apartment Complex. Well, what facilitated, this is one of two instances that's come up, to be able to do that, they want to bring in some more money partners. So the ILA itself names a certain set of partners and now they're bringing in new partners, right? And then there's another project, I just got an email last, late last month from Jay Livingston, local attorney, who's working with a group on Ponce Preserve. Similar situation. They need more money or they have a change in, you know, partners that are funding it. Those types of things happen in the development process. So the cure, we felt the appropriate cure might be to have a permanent policy that allows the board to delegate that authority to sign these agreements, amend, as they get amended after staff review, legal review, have the school board and superintendent sign off on that. If it's something more substantive, obviously it'd have to come back to the board. But if it's within the agreement, which is amendment, the section 22 stays within the framework of that language.
So would it still come back to us?
No. If you pass this policy, we could, if, if things come up and as long as it's interpreted as like, okay, it's within the bounds of, of amendment 20, or the portion, section 22 of the agreement itself, then we're recommending that Ms. Moore be authorized to sign off on that.
Would it eventually come back to the board even for information on the board for?
If it changes.
Oh, yeah. I mean, if the agreement itself.
No, 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 no. I'm talking about for informing the public and the board, will it come back to us?
I don't see any reason why it wouldn't. That'd be up to Ms. Moore as to how she'd want to implement that.
Because I would not be comfortable with that if it does not.
If the, if the owner changes, you would want that to.
Not with a change. I'm talking about if there is, if Chairman Fury or Ms. Moore signs off on an agreement, right? That would normally come before the, the board and the community.
Yeah, it does.
Right?
Right.
So after that is signed off on, outside of a school board meeting, will that, not without a change, I'm saying what was agreed upon, will that come back before the board? I'm not saying for approval or changing or amending. I'm talking about for information for the board and the community.
If you would like it to come back, we could have it come back, but this is mainly for when we have a change of ownership.
It's administrative matter.
So the title will change, so everything has already been approved, but they, they sold the project, let's just say.
Yep, they printed it.
But everything that was already approved runs with the sale.
Exactly.
Nothing else is changing.
I get it. I don't, I don't care about any of that, right? Like, not to, I'm not being slip, I'm just saying, I don't care about any of those, those kind of details. What I care about is that we're informed and the public is aware.
That there was a transfer.
That it, that it occurred.
That there was a change of ownership.
Whatever.
So there could be a quarterly report.
Yep.
You know, provided to the board or a monthly report provided to the board of any of those changes in ownership, just to keep you apprised and up to date. So if it was previously Developer Smith who owned the property, but they sold it to Developer Jones, it would be just for your notification and notice that Developer Jones is now the owner of this development, moving it forward, but they, because of the assignment, they are acknowledging that they agree that they have to abide by the same litigation agreement that we entered into with the original entities.
But if myself or Mr. Furry is gonna have to sign it, we can bring that back with every, I mean, every informational, because we're having.
That's what I'm saying. I, I, I'm not, I'm not questioning anybody.
For transparency, I think that's a great idea.
That's all. I'm just saying for transparency.
If we just bring it back under operational services and just put it as an information only update.
Information only.
But I would like to be able to tell the developers, hey, we have this, you know, mechanism that allows us to do that administratively. For example, the one that came up, they wanted to close on the land on January 4.
So I just, Dr. Cox was saying, we, she's okay, I, I'm okay with us putting that procedure in place so that it can happen.
Yep.
But we just want to know that it did happen.
Sure.
Right? Is that, is that what we're talking about?
There's no problem with it.
Just transparency.
Yeah, next informational workshop, bring that back and, and share the information.
Yeah. And again, that, that's up to the powers that be, to how that's handled.
Yeah, yeah. How that gets on there.
Yeah.
But I, so we're, it's that we're okay moving forward with that.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yes, 100%. I, I think it's good that there's a, they know that something transferred on these.
Correct. Correct.
Projects.
And in the cases of the two that have come up that are causing this discussion, that's all it was. It was different partners getting named in the.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
But it allows for us to, to, to correct our record too, so that someone can go back and see.
It's part of the public record, yes. That's all.
And it doesn't delay, if we have this procedure, it doesn't delay that owner or that new owner from moving forward.
I don't have an issue with that.
Okay.
Which is what the whole interlo, the agreements are about anyway.
Yeah. I just, yeah, no problem with that.
Yeah. All right. One quick thing to the next ILA working group to prepare for the oversight committee.
Yeah.
That's gonna happen next week, the 18th.
Okay.
Dave and I are gonna facilitate that and then the actual ILA working group and the over, the oversight group will be February 21st.
Okay. We're in Tallahassee.
Yeah, we, we'll have that meeting, that's a staff level meeting.
Okay, you don't need us.
No, no. Yeah.
The working group is next week.
The working group, not, you don't need us as part of that?
Correct.
Okay, okay.
Correct. It's just to prepare the way for when we do have the policy meeting.
Oversight meeting is in February.
And if you want a briefing, we, we can get together before February.
Yes, yes, that would be beneficial, I think.
Yeah. Sorry.
Okay.
Chair Furry, I do recommend that we pull 10.03 and we will bring that back before you at the January meeting.
Okay, very good. We can do that.
Yes. The January informational meeting.
Okay. Now.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And let's see here, we have Human Resources, 11.01, request board approval for personnel items. Do you have to?
I'm gonna skip.
Dr. Cox, I just want you to.
Well, can we just, can we change the order if you, there's information you need to share?
Well, yes, let's just really quick go to, well, well, there's, yeah, can you come first? We needed to address the, the, this is, this is not on the agenda.
This is old business?
This will be old business that, for the letter of interest that are in for a school board attorney. Dr. Can you, can you stay for this here? Because I think it's important for you to be part of.
Okay, yes.
So, good evening, Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Moore. Last week, we received two semitals for the request for letters of interest for the school board attorney. I have dispersed each of you a copy of each, along with what is, what I call selection committee guidelines. It's kind of the process of what we are going to go through. It's probably a little bit more technical than, because we usually use evaluation criteria when, when scoring proposals that come in. And we didn't set any kind of criteria to score these like we do when it's more of a, a little more technical evaluations. So really what the next step is here is, these are your copies to review, make notes before we all come together again to, we, we need to set a date to come together to proceed further where you would discuss your evaluation of each of these firms and where we would like to go with either of them.
So we'll need to set.
So this is our homework.
Homework. And we'll need to set a date, so maybe we can do this through, Lorraine, if you could, can we have you send out emails to request dates for, so we can meet on this here?
It's Gray Robinson.
They're big.
Do they also do, are they a big, they have a big lobbying firm in Tallahassee?
Mm-hmm. Yes, they do.
Yeah, okay.
They do.
I know, I believe they're based out of more land or like maybe one of their offices.
I think McDougal, McDougal works for them.
I don't know about that, but they're all over. They're big.
So just so you know, when you, when it comes to formal solicitations like this, we have 30 days. Statute allows us 30 days. These are not public records. So what you have in your hand are not to be dispersed by, not to be discussed. If any, if you're contacted, we are protected by Florida statute to not provide these from, you know, to anybody, whether it's another firm, anything.
The last school board meeting, we were told there was a Weiss, what, who did you say?
Yes.
Expressed interest.
I, well, they were, they expressed interest, and that was something we were gonna talk about too here, is they expressed interest to be in our interim school board.
Until we hired somebody.
Right, right. And whether, I, I don't, it appears they did not respond to this here, but they did, said they would be interested in, in doing the, the interim. So, and, and I've tried to reach out to others, it's just been impossible with the, with the holiday season here, and so they're the only one we have right now. We have worked with this firm before for outside counsel.
Which firm? What, the Weiss?
Weiss, yeah.
That's what I'm saying. I know that, I just, I know they were mentioned and we don't have anything on them.
No, they're not part of this.
They didn't apply.
They didn't apply.
They basically didn't provide us a medal.
So.
Interesting.
Yeah. But they did, and I have not revisited that with them since there are, they sent the email saying that they would be willing to be open to the interim. So at this point, I'm gonna reengage them in that because right now they're, they're the only one that, that I have that's willing, so.
Okay.
Okay? All right. So, very good. And then, so, Dr., are you leaving now?
Good? We're good? Yep, you're good?
I'm sorry. Thank you for that update.
Can I ask a real quick question? What is the fastest that something like this could? Because we're talking about an interim, right?
Right.
Like, if, you know, we all came together, we reviewed it and we were like, this one? And they accepted and we got, like, what, like, what is that like?
I mean, in all honesty, if we, if we have the interim in place, I would give it that there should be no reason that this could not get approved. If, if this is the direction that you want to go with one of these two firms at your February meeting.
Okay.
Yeah. As long as, I mean, because it depends on, normally the next steps would be the committee, the five of you come together, we review them, you evaluate them, pros and cons of each, discussions, things like that. You determine whether you want to bring both of these firms in to give you a presentation or just have discussions with them. It can be simple, it can be complex, however you'd like. And then moving forward from there, you know, so there's some options.
Well, Chair Furry, I just want to put a little structure behind this. To Chris's point, are we able to put tentative on the workshop for the beginning of February if we want proposals? And then can we, again, placeholder for the business meeting in February? Like, any recommendations you have on process?
Ideally, what I would recommend is that in the next, if, being that there's only two, there's not, I mean, these aren't big, they're not major technical, you're, these would be something you could probably read in a night or two and make some notes. I would say if we could meet maybe next week, I, I think.
They're out of town.
Out of town. So maybe early the following week, the 22nd, 23rd, something like that, then potentially you can come up with a solution. We could determine at that time if you want to bring these firms in or have discussions with them, how you want to go. So it's easily something that can be moved forward and put on the agenda for, for the first meeting.
I, I, I'm confused. So please help me along this line. I don't recall us making a decision on what direction we were taking, whether we were going to go with a motion, because you need a motion. And I don't ever have, remember having a motion on if we were going to adopt a school board attorney separate to a district attorney. We've discussed it, but nothing has been formally adopted in my recollection.
Well, we approved the job description of the separate.
We approved the job description, but we've never approved which direction.
Does that need to be on the agenda for the end of this month?
Well, we have to decide what we're doing. I mean, I, you know, I don't know what we're doing. Are we gonna continue to hire one attorney and then they'll do that? Or are we gonna go with the school board representative and the district attorney? We've never really formally made any decision. And I think we better do that first.
Well, as far as, as far as the district attorney, my understanding is that would fall under superintendent more.
The selection, yes. But I mean, I'm talking process.
Yeah. No, and it's great to, I think, that's all I was really looking for, is to make sure we have process and structure before we maybe leave tonight. So if that discussion needs to happen at the end of this month.
We should put that on the next meeting, the business meeting then, if we're gonna have to, to.
We have the motion.
To make a motion, to vote that structure in.
Yeah.
But the, the thing is, is that we have, we, we already had consensus that that was a direction. Now we have these to choose from, and so, which we, we haven't, we're, we're looking at an interim for us, for, for the school board. And I believe we, there is, for the school district, we, we have some outside counsel that could be used while this is all.
It will be like interim status as well.
Right, right. Interim status. So I mean, we, we could, we could still workshop this on, in, in February, after we've done this, if we both have interim representation, right? And then on, on the February, vote, vote that in. Because right now also, we, we're now down two board members in this conversation.
I agree.
So, but, but in the, in the next meeting, we can have some more discussion when we review these. We can talk a little bit more about that as well at that meeting. And I think that is what we'll.
We gotta do something because, I mean, my, my biggest concern is financial. I mean, we have to really look at, at both sides financially, how it's gonna impact our proof budget.
Patty, are you able to come in on that conversation, just to help the board understand? Because, you know, this is a weird situation where we don't, you know.
Well, I'm not sure, because we don't know what it's gonna cost us at this particular time. I mean, even interim.
So what, right now, what you're asking is for the January 23rd, are you asking for the workshop and the board meeting for this to be on? Or are you asking for this to be on your business meeting?
I think.
When I say this, the attorney's structure.
Yeah, because I mean, that's, we've got to decide, we have to make a permanent decision as to what direction we want to go. And then I think we also have to consider how much, well, this will help, how much we want to extend financially, a set alongside financially that we have, so then we can.
Well, when does their 30 days start? You say they have 30 days.
This opens on the 4th, so, I mean, technically, 30 days just means that they're not public record knowledge, you know, so these go, these are protective.
But not a time clock on decisions.
No. You like to usually get a decision made within 30 days, you know, it's 30 days or upon recommendation of a ward. So, I mean, we're looking at early February. If not, all that does is that the contents that's in here gets, is, is able to be released to the public.
Chair Furry, can I just say what I would need as, as one vote to answer Superintendent Moore's question and to also speak to, I think, what Cheryl is saying? I mean, I would need Chris to, even something you've come forward with, you know, whether we're talking about food or whatever, it's like, this is who you have to choose from,[1672.12] it's like, this is who you have to choose from, right? Like, this is, you know, here's what it is. I need to know your expertise in this matter. I need to know from a budget perspective, like, what can, Superintendent Moore needs to be in the mix because when we're talking about, do we want one or that, you operate the district. So your voice and only your voice is what matters on, for your side of the house, right? So I feel like, to answer your question, we'd have a robust conversation at the next workshop with also at a minimum of this on the placeholder for the business meeting, should there need to be a vote on it.
We do have direction.
Okay, so then why don't we do this? Why don't we, Ms. Thompson's going to send out for dates that we can meet. Why don't we, while we're reviewing this, have that discussion? I'd like to have Ms. Womack there to talk about, so we can talk about budget items and of course Superintendent Moore. And then we will, let's make that, let's make that decision there so that we can set a date to put it on a business agenda to vote it in. After we, at the same time, we're looking at who has responded as well. So we can do that all in the same visit. It's still within our 30 days period of time. And then I think we'll have a clear direction and hopefully everyone will be there so that we can have clear consensus on our move forward.
And Chris, these are both firms, right?
We need more than consensus, one more motion because we're changing our...
Well, what I mean is, our consensus on when, where we're going to put, when we're going to put this on the agenda forward so we can make that motion.
We got to get direction. At this point, we have no direction. We're looking at a number of different things, but we need to know what direction this board is going to take. That's where we need to go.
Correct. And we, but overall, it has been, the conversation has been, this is the direction the board has been wanting to go. But now it's, now we're in the 11th hour, we have to, we have to make that final.
Yeah.
So I agree with you on that.
So for recap, Ms. Thompson is going to push out some dates of possibility for the week of the 23rd for Chris to walk the board through these documents. We are bringing for the attorney's structure for the workshop informational on the 23rd. And we have a placeholder on the 6 o'clock business meeting in the event the board is ready to take such action.
Yeah, the one, the only name I didn't hear in the mix of all of that is if, if I review this one and I, and I as one vote love it, and their rate is $20 billion, right? So that's where like I need Patty in the mix to say, Patty, love them, do we have $20 billion for our board attorney? So I just, I just want to make sure.
She'll be included in that conversation at that meeting.
I just need to make sure everybody who we really need to hear from, because, yes, Chris?
Well, we know how much money and salary has already been budgeted for and benefits. So that would, I assume is going to be where we're going to be kind of...
Starting.
Yeah.
And I think you'll find when you review these, what is in there, you're going to have more questions. So I think, once you see what's there, you know, that's, when we come to the table, those will be the questions to ask.
Did we already, did we already vote on the dollar amount that's going to be spent? I didn't think we had.
We don't know.
So you're saying that as like the target or...
Within the framework of our current budget.
Of what budget we currently have allotted for that.
Got you, got you.
That's where we need to find ourselves.
Okay.
Okay, so we're clear on that for there?
We wrote it down.
All right.
Thank you.
Very good. So, and while we're in old business, just an update, the, on the motion for termination of Ms. Gavin's contract, there was no mutual agreement that was reached prior to the deadline. This last week, I reached out to Shetson Bowen, and because of the holiday, they were still not back in the office. So I was able to connect with Mr. Norby yesterday, and he had said that we could expect the letter that's necessary to be prepared before the end of the week. So just if anybody has not sent in their cause, it needs to be in by tomorrow to the attorney and so that they can prepare their letter for termination with cause. Okay? So now that, so we'll go back now to...
11.01.
Where were we?
11.01.
Yeah, 11.01, request board approval for personnel items.
Exciting news.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good to see you. Thanks for coming.
Awesome.
Thank you. All right, so it's just our, you know, personnel agenda. We've got, we certainly have some resignations coming through, but as you see, we've got multiple instructional appointments that are being made, and I just saw a few more come through today for recommendations for hire for teachers, so. Nothing there really.
Any questions on...
That was my concern. We've got quite a few teacher resignations and yet we have no hires on this. So hopefully this is updated.
Yeah, there's an updated one that, that we put up. So there's...
What do we get?
Six instructional up there. And then I just saw one more come through today right before I came up.
Okay, well, no, we have, we have three teachers here. You know, there's our, I'm just looking at teachers.
Yes.
Okay, so we have three teachers here that were appointed, okay, right? That's what I'm...
And we'll continue to update. We've got some through, they're just coming through as recommendations right now.
All right.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Andrew.
All right, so now we will go to a number 19. Superintendent, contract services for legal services to superintendent and more designees.
Good afternoon, Chair Fury, once again, board members and Superintendent Moore. Back in July of 2022, the school district entered with Sniffin and Spelman Law Firm for them to provide us services as our chief negotiator for FESPA and FCA bargaining. What you have before you is an addendum to that contract. While the contract is still in effect, what is shown in this is that it removes the limitation of them serving us only as the chief negotiator, but rather to provide legal services to the superintendent in all areas for the school district as she deems fit.
So this would be for the, for interim services or?
Yes, along with some other personnel matters that we're working through.
Okay, very good. Any questions regarding?
Is there anything Patty dollar amount that we have to discuss?
And the original contract, which you'll see on Board Doc 2, I left it there just for a point of reference, their rate is there, I think, on page two for the different levels of service they provide to us depending on who's providing the service. What we will do to get us through the rest of this fiscal year or to just get a PO after this is approved is just do an open PO for probably about $30,000.
Which is well within the, what is it, $50,000?
Yes.
Okay, and that's, thank you. So you're well within that.
And so for you as a board, just for fiscal oversight, you know, any of these, anything that we will be going to them for beyond chief negotiation, all of that will funnel through approval process through senior cabinet first. So it will not be that there will just be this open access to them, but all of those requests, all of that information will funnel through senior cabinet first to ensure that we're being conservative with the dollars that we have allocated for, for this support.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any, any more questions regarding this?
I think it's a great idea to just open up that relationship. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Okay, so we've already done old business, but was there any other old business that anybody wanted to bring up? Okay, and new business, any new business?
Uh-oh.
Okay, so then we will move on to public comment. Is there anybody offering a comment? Okay, so there is no public comments this evening, so we will go to closing comments. Any closing comments? Ms. Hent, any closing comments tonight?
Happy New Year.
I will add that we pulled the Navigate 360 so that Mr. Willingham could continue to monitor the storm and dismissal process, and we were in good, I'm sorry.
I was going to say, just from our conversation, not timing, do we want to talk about the software portion of it?
Yeah, sure, well, no, I think it's fine. We were going to bring it back on the 23rd. And so we just pulled it, I didn't want him to be here presenting and not really watching what was happening with the storm and the dismissal of our students. So you'll get the Navigate 360 information coming back to you likely on the 23rd in order to help us be in compliance with the new Florida model. And that'll come to you.
All right, and I'd just like to close with a Happy New Year to everybody. Excited for our new year. And I just want to also congratulate Ms. Kimani McCoy, who represented Flagler County Day at the opening of legislation in Tallahassee and sang the National Anthem and did an amazing job.
Phenomenal.
Phenomenal job. And it was really a proud moment for Flagler Schools to have one of our own be honored in such a way. And so we're, congratulations to her and her family. Also, the, we also, and thank you to Speaker Renner.
Yes.
For the, for making that happen, for that personal invitation to have...
It was great. And to watch it and to see him afterwards, just like being with just such, so much pride in the great job that she did was super special. And I watched it both times. It was absolutely amazing. And you will see it come to you again. Some type of way, we will get it to be played here before this board.
Could we, at the next school board meeting, have that?
Spotlight her?
Well, or have, yes, but could we also have her video used for our...
Well, we'll see about bringing back a live singer.
I like the live option.
Or a...
She's a superstar now, let's get her now.
Listen, that's even, that's even better. But yeah, that would be lovely.
We will work on that.
You should hear Whitney Houston, phenomenal.
You already have a LinkedIn handle.
Yeah. Actually, Speaker Renner says, if you thought that was good, you should hear her sing Whitney Houston. That's how we can close out her...
She is, definitely.
Parents, so.
Flagrant talent.
Very poised and a freshman.
Yeah, 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 she was Buddy Taylor before.
Anything more, Superintendent Moore?
No, tomorrow is the 90th day of school, and we are super excited to have our students back. And we want to just say, remember, get into those healthy routines as we jumpstart the second semester. And have a great evening, Happy New Year.
All right, thank you all, be safe, everybody.
All right. Stay dry.